You good? Jeff? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the Town of Rockport Planning Board Meeting for March 2025. Time is 5:31. Start this meeting, I see that we have a quorum, five members present. This board consists of up to seven residents of Rockport, volunteers appointed by the Select Board to review land use applications, changes to zoning, and other duties prescribed in the ordinances of the town and laws of the state. Tonight's agenda consists of the following items. Approving the minutes from last month, an application for a subdivision, a pre-application for a subdivision review, a major subdivision located at 615 Rockland Street, which I'll describe more later. Site plan review for what's called the MRC, Midcoast Recreation Center, and several items that have appeared for other business that will come after that. So with that, I'd like to first offer the microphone to anybody in the public who'd like to speak on anything that's non-agenda related, that's not on our agenda, which I just mentioned, now's the time, welcome to come up to the microphone and talk about those issues. Seeing no interest, it looks like everyone's here for the agenda items. I'll close the public comment on non-agenda. Item three is to approve the minutes from February. Did those members present have a chance to look at the minutes from February's meeting? Okay.
I did.
You did look at it? Peter, did you have a chance to check it? Okay. So seeing we have a majority of the people who were there that can review it, did any issues come up on that that we'd like to go over? I know we've all made sort of small mistakes.
I need some last minute rewordings.
Last minute, I'm sure they're all.
Nothing substantive.
Okay, nothing substantive. I didn't see anything substantive.
I just had, I did have one question.
Okay, then that's great.
It was toward the end, and it had to do with the Department of Environmental Protection. I put, I put a comment at the bottom, and maybe Orion, you could just explain to me, maybe, I didn't know how to word it, but I didn't understand what it said.
You had a question about the NRPA review, that's Natural Resource Protection Act review, that's all it was.
Ah, perfect.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Peter, lastly, did you have any substantive changes? Okay. So can we have a motion to approve the minutes as edited in the document of the...
So moved.
So moved, thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded of the February meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. Jen, are you upstanding because you weren't there?
I wasn't there.
Okay, great. So four, zero, one. Okay. So the next item is the subdivision pre-application for a major subdivision on a parcel located at 615 Rockland Street, so those applicants can go up to the table. This parcel is identified as MAP 17 Lot 107, owned by Craig and Cassandra Mitchell. This application is being presented by Gregory Finch and Jonathan Biddle, who have interest in this parcel. So we're going to first have the applicants present this, then we'll have an open public comment period, and for that I'll ask the public to limit their comments to three minutes apiece at the microphone at the podium, and identify themselves, if they live in the Town of Rockport, or whatever, and we'll move on from there. So Gregory, Jonathan.
You got it right.
Okay, great. Are Craig and Cassandra Mitchell here today?
They are not here today, we have...
Just received this, if you want that.
Great. So we've got a statement saying that you're representing their interest, which they've signed.
Correct, and for clarity, Jonathan and I are in kind of the due diligence phase with Craig, as to whether or not to purchase this property, so this is part of, part of that effort for him.
Pass it on down. Okay, so what I'd ask you to do is just present, we've got the information that you've supplied through Orion's office, that we've all had a chance to look at, but if you could just walk us through it.
Sure.
In a way, I think Orion will bring it up on the screen, which is there, and which we have here, so we're going to be seeing what's there as well. But if you could just present the intent of the project.
Certainly.
I think you might probably understand the process here, that there's a pre-application review, and then there's, we have to do a site walkthrough.
Right.
At the next phase of it, and that would be, I can't remember what that's called, a draft or something, application, and then there's a final.
Correct. Yeah, there's, this is the first of three potentially meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, please.
Great, thank you. Well, to kind of the point of this pre-application, this sketch that we put together here is, you know, very much fluid.
Are the microphones on? I'm having trouble hearing.
Yeah, you're gonna have to really speak into it.
Thank you.
The microphones don't actually work for people here, they're for people that are watching online.
They, they work back there.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yes, so, so as this sketch sits here, is very much kind of just our, how we've divided to the best we can the property, with the intention of the lots being between three-quarters of an acre and, and two acres is the, is the largest lot. As it sits, we've divided into 25 lots, like we were alluding to earlier, we've got no pride of ownership over that. We're very eager for feedback, both from you and the community, as to what best suits the town. There is about three acres of wetlands on the property, which we've denoted in this green space and blue area here. There is a stream, which I think we're going to need to amend this, just even from some of the feedback that Andrew's given us informally prior to the meeting here, to, to better account for those crossings, and perhaps maybe change some of the allocations on, on these lots. But our intent, if we move forward with this, would be to kind of do this sort of in phases, sort of starting from the outside of the property and working our way, our way in. But generally, that's, that's kind of a high-level overview of sort of how we've envisioned this project, and how we've divided these lot lines to the best of our ability at this stage of the process without doing any substantive, you know, engineering or surveying.
Okay. And then what we traditionally do is take clarification questions from the board. We're not deliberating on this tonight.
Right.
So this isn't a vote that we're going to take at the end of this, and really, we're just seeking the, the presentation from yourselves, feedback from the public, and clarification from us to understand what it is we're doing here. Are there clarifying questions that members of the board would like to ask the applicants?
This is just ignorance. Is there, and there's, there's only one way in and out of the subdivision.
Correct.
Is there any ruling that, that there has to be more than one way in or out of a, of a sub, of a major subdivision?
Ruling?
Well, a law, a requirement, a regulation, no, what have you. No? Okay.
Main do, like if you're suggesting from 17 to 90, main DOT might have something to say about that, but...
But, but there's nothing about a second entrance, or, okay. Okay.
I mean, there are, you know, depending on the size of the development and the amount of traffic going in and out, there are requirements for having the proper width, for being able to have an in and an outs lane, coming in and out of the proper width, but that's, I'm sure inside of that piece, right? Like, and that's something they'll look at as they go through.
I'm just worried about a second actual...
Yeah, outside of that, no.
No, okay.
Any clarifying questions?
Yeah. What's, what's the speed limit here? Is it down to 35 at this point, or is it still 55?
Yeah. It's so, it's right before, I think, is it where that, one, the white building with the heart on it, I think right after that, it turns 35, and then the property is on the right-hand side, right there.
Okay. This is a, this is a question for Orion. I know we had a, we had a discussion about a property that was going to be turned into residence, it was a part of the Penn Bay, there were Penn Bay offices, recall that? And we were talking about whether a deceleration lane was going to be required. Is, is that, would that be applicable to a place of this size?
Potentially, I'd have to review that section of our ordinance, but potentially, if it's applicable, it could be a requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, just in terms of that, as you guys go through this piece, move into the next part, making sure that understanding traffic in and out of this place is going to be something you want to be on the right side of. I think, like you said, having better understandings of the, you know, the water that is on the site, and then the way that it would be impacted, or amended, as you put it, those are going to be very big things that need to be, like I said, like that will be the stuff that the engineering needs to be put into in order to make sure that this is going to be able to go forward as is, or not as is, but as you want it to be on this parcel. You know, I think that's the biggest piece, is, is make sure you partner with somebody who actually has a fair amount of experience with all these things, because if it comes back to us, and it's, and it's with somebody who's kind of got it from, you know, distance aways, and doesn't really fully understand, like everything, and he doesn't have it down just, "Well, I see that, but I'm asking for a replacement of this, even though it actually requires it," like, if it's that, it's going to be a lot harder to pull this thing through.
Right.
If it's, everything's in, and like, yeah, man, like, here's the code, here's the piece, here's we go, this is how we handle it, everything's a lot easier, right? So, but as you can tell, we have the questions we have right off the bat, it's, it's how are you going to impact traffic with the amount of units that you have there? Are those the right number of units that you have there? And then making sure that your environmental is correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other clarification questions? We'll deliberate some more after public comment. Clarification, Peter?
I apologize for not knowing, but in other planning boards, I'm looking that this is a PUD, Plan Unit Development. So in other planning boards that I was on, there was an incentive for a PUD versus a standard subdivision, because you, in theory, kept more green space. Is that, is there an incentive in Rockport? Is this a PUD, or is this a standard subdivision submittal? Do you have a PUD bylaw?
We, we have a PUD ordinance.
Ordinance.
Yeah. I don't recall, you know, talking about a PUD.
Well, it's labeled Plan Unit, you know, that, right at the top.
Oh, Plan Unit Residential Development. Have you all looked at our PUD ordinance? And I'm pretty sure...
No, I was basically, actually, that, that's just our, our draftsman, I think, just unintentionally put that in there.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no, there's no addressing the PUD.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're going after our, or utilizing our ordinance.
Okay, so then I guess the follow-up question at some point is, it doesn't look like there's any buffer zone, or a hell of a lot of green space on the schematic that we're seeing, and so that concerns me.
Yeah, so the majority of the houses won't be taking up the whole entire property, and the type of houses that we're trying to build are a little different than what you would see up here. They're going to be steel sit panel systems, so they'll be more resistant to weather, but also there will be a lot less waste in the area, and they're all going to be on slabs, so we'll have radiant floors. We're trying to make the least impact on the land as possible. So, you know, that's why we kind of kept them around three-quarters of an acre, so we wouldn't have to take away a lot of the trees, and each individual house will have their privacy from each other. So we want to utilize the trees around us that we can. So when it comes to each housing spot, I feel like we're going to have to look at what is on the land before we actually put the house there, so that we can utilize the bigger trees, keep them intact as much as possible. This has nothing to do with your question, but our other thing is, is to bring a lot more jobs to this area and housing, because I know a lot of my friends that are doctors and nurses, they're, they're always looking for housing. And, you know, I have a lot of carpenter friends, plumbers and all that, and I'm excited to bring them all in on this, and they're all local to here. I think the furthest one that I have is, is in Searsport, and I'm looking forward to bringing more business for you guys and housing as well.
So to, to address Peter's question about PUDs, which I don't think is a term, the terminology that we use in the Rockport ordinance, I think what comes closest to a Plan Unit Development is the Cluster Development ordinance that we have in the Land Use Ordinance, which does do the thing that I think PUDs do, is allocate spaces for, that are open and will be preserved as open. But this seems to be applying under basically straight zoning, minimum lot sizes, not giving any kind of bonus for having a sidewalk or having that green open space, it's really just straight zoning for this, this zone, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
With that said, though, if, we're very receptive to feedback if you feel like there should be more green space in this plan, like I was saying at the beginning, this is kind of like our, just, take, take, take the boundary and...
Which is like, you get more ability to do more density if it's a cluster development, and then it becomes not really, you know, our desire for more green space, it's really, it's written into the ordinance.
Right, based on the minimum lot size for the, yeah.
Yeah. I think we're delving into more, like probing questions, so I'd like to open the public comment period for this, and ask that anybody who'd like to speak about this application, come to the mic, again, limit theirselves to three minutes and identify where their Town of Residence is. Yeah, please, just, if you see it's open, you can come up and talk.
My name is Jeffrey Kubel, and I reside at 30 Bonnie Street, where I've lived for the past 48 years. Same house. I've walked the property where this proposed subdivision is located, I've walked it many times over the past 48 years, and I have to say, I have serious concerns about what you have planned here. My first concern is the loss of wildlife habitat, especially as it applies to the wetlands, and its adverse effect on the amphibian population. This area of Rockport has already lost a significant wetlands area with the construction of the MRC, and I hate to think of another area being lost so close to this one. There is a significant amount of diversity in the wildlife that call this area home, and it would be a shame to lose this. There are also several vernal pools, one of which I would not be surprised for it to be judged significant by the National Resource Act, and it's significant for the presence of, of the inhabitants. Number two is the issue of the septic. This is a very wet area and has a sizable stream not reflected on the map. I'm glad you recognize that it's not been reflected, because it's reflected on the main gaze at here, as a significant stream, and the water flows right through, all the way down, and this comes from, it comes from Rocky Pond, by the way, and it goes into Route 90, and then it goes on to Tomlin Pond, and on to the Oyster River. I'm not a hydrologist, but I find it hard to believe that the size of this retention pond will be large enough to safely handle the existing water that's flowing through this property, plus the runoff from roofs, driveways, and asphalt roads. My number three is the traffic issue, and you've already brought part of that up. We already see a long line of traffic coming east from Hope, Union, and Washington at the Route 90-17 intersection. And we continue to see accidents, a lot of them at this intersection. It's a dangerous intersection, it's been recognized by the state as one of the more dangerous ones in the state. And where the excess road is proposed for this subdivision, and this has already been brought up, is also close where the 55 mile per hour speed limit decreases to 35. And I can tell you, few people and trucks going west adjust their speed to this 35, and I know, because I've got these people riding my bumper every time I'm coming down from, on the 55. So I look at this as pretty dangerous, and it's going to have to be a lot of planning and a lot of traffic study to make this safe. So, in my opinion, there are many questions that have to be answered, and there's an awful lot of study that has to be done before any ground can be broken. That's my piece, thank you.
Thank you.
Been a while since I've been in this room. My name's Clifton Ames, I live in, right adjacent to what you guys have proposed. I can't read the lot numbers from here, but I own two or three lots just on the bottom corner of that page. My sister is here as well, she owns a lot just there, the one with the, next to me. The issue Jeff brought up with water, I just, Jeff came over and we walked that piece just last weekend, it's knee-deep right now, that whole corner is underwater, and it is, I've got photographs that I can show the board if anyone's interested in seeing those in a later in the meeting, or privately, whatever. Right now, the water runs, the watershed that runs down through there doesn't just come from Rocky Pond, that's just one of the water sheds that come down, that comes off of, off of Vinyl Road, Mitchell Pond, the backside of Rocky Pond, and that, that shed comes through, and that's a steady brook that comes out of Rocky Pond. But there's also the, the watersheds that come down from the old Cangis Farm, they cross into Meadow Road, and they go in back of where Schooner Bay had their taxi. And you, and you know, and you know the little pond that sits in front of that, at Schooner Bay, that's always got water in it, that's the water table level of that area, so. And back of Paul Beckford's house, which is across from Rocky Pond, I, that's just, just to the right of the corner of that, it doesn't show it in the, his lot in the picture, but it's wet from there. If you walk in on Meadow Road, where the substation is on the power line, and you walk in the back of that, and you start in, you're knee-deep all the way to the back of my house, and that water all has to mitigate down through my lot, my sister's lot, my other younger sister's lot, that used to come down through, quite a bit of it came down through on the power line. The rest of it, there's a split high spot, oh, I should probably say some history, I've lived there for 62 years, so I know the ground, and...
Let me just clarify real quick, this is the lots you're speaking of.
Yeah, that's my... Yeah, those two and that, those three, those three lots, and I've got photographs to show you what kind of water's there at, at present. The spring runoff is usually quite extensive. When we were kids, we used to go down in those woods with ice skates on and skate around in the alders, there's three feet of ice in there. And it's, every bit of that green area they're showing, plus probably all of the lots that are adjacent to us is underwater part of the year. And it all mitigates water out through, and that disperses into, so you've got a lot of watershed happening in that area, a lot more than you're seeing, even some of the brooks midsummer are dry, you know, the ground's dry, to, on the top, but you stick a shovel in, and the water's right there, it's just not moving at that point. The other thing I think that's a major concern is that if they do something similar to what they've drawn, it's like a big dam, and it's going to push back on me, that water's got to get away, it's got to go, it's got to flow, and, and if you understood the ledge layers and the clay layers in that area, I literally have lived there my whole life, so we've seen everything. Some springs, that water's traveling down through there, and it's, you know, those little brooks that dry completely out in August are eight feet wide and four feet deep, and it happens every, every year, there's some amount of water, and some years more than others, and, and Jeff referenced that, Jeff Kubel referenced that, that water runs into that stream that crosses through the lower section of that. How many times has Bonnie Street flooded? And then you take that water and back it up, up on the backside, it's going to come down through there even more, and then if you, if you think about, they just replaced all of Robinson Drive's Bridge, had to be, I mean, this washed out three times in the last 10 years, so they've...
Same watershed.
It's all the same watershed, that's all that same, so there's a significant amount of water in West Rockport in those woods, so something to seriously be considered. And I don't know how they'd mitigate, what they're showing for green space would, would then even start to cover what's wet. And then there's displacement, again, Jeff touched on some of the same things that concern me, I've lived there, we, we have homes there, we have, we've been cautious about, you know, keeping it wild and keeping spaces between the lots, and making sure that there's privacy and that, the animal displacement, we have, you know, the deer yard in there, there's, if I took you in there right now, I could walk you through the deer sign that's, that's just covering the ground from the winter over. And again, all the pools, the frogs, there's probably six or seven species of frogs in there, and there's salamanders, and we've got photographs of all the animals, bobcat, foxes, fisher, there's a lot of stuff that's going to get displaced with something like that. And I know animals, that's not usually a concern when people are looking for homes, but if you do it right, I think you could do, you could probably keep your animals, but you, you can't displace them. That's, when I saw that, I, you know, I, I panicked, I haven't slept for two weeks, wondering what they're going to do to what we grew up in, West Rockport, it's got a kind of a, it's not Rockport, it's West Rockport, and we, we, we make sure that the signs in West Rockport say West Rockport, because we're proud of it. We would like to keep, you know, our, you know, it's my heritage, my son's here, he grew up on the property as well, so, you know, we're, we're not against what you're trying to do, we just really don't think that that's the, really don't think that's the place for it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to point out before I, this is my lot right here, the whole bottom of my lot.
Sorry ma'am, we, we actually can't see that screen, so...
Okay, well, anyway.
If you can tell us a number, we could see it on our screen, but... Oh, look at that, yeah.
That worked for a minute. You just say the numbers.
It's the one that's got the little extra divot on it, because it is so wet there, I had to buy...
And if you could approach the microphone, just identify yourself, and...
It's this piece right here.
Sorry ma'am, could you speak into the mic? Thank you.
This piece right here, I had to buy property...
Sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but just give us your name.
Oh, okay. Carolyn Cross.
Thank you.
And I grew up right on Route 17, know the property very well. So my point is that even where my lot is, I had to buy extra property off my sister to put in my septic system, that is how wet it is. These, all these lots here, I really, unless you brought in a mound of fill, there's no way you're going to be able to get leach field in there, and if you bring in a mound of fill, that water will be in my basement, his basement, their basement, his basement. It, between my brother's piece of property and mine, there is a brook that, like he said, will dry up maybe August, unless it rains. If it rains, it runs, and there's always water, pools of water in the brook, it may not be running force, right now, it's running pretty forcefully, because of the melt-off and, and that's not noted on there. It's not a year-round thing, I guess that's why, but it is significant. And maybe I'm not up on the times, but these lots look awfully small, has Rockport allowed this size lot? Because that many leach fields is, anyway, it's going to take so much fill to get a leach field in there, that I'm not going to have a backyard or a dry basement anymore. And I'm not against the whole thing, but I really don't see how any of these lower don't see how any of these lower lots are going to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from, yes, please.
Good evening. Tom Jurwitz, Rockport resident. I just want to reiterate what was already mentioned about the point of entry and exit. And I would recommend to the planning board that maybe emergency services might weigh in with some kind of risk assessment depending on what size development ends up being to make sure, you know, that if the worst thing happens on 17, people can get in and out if they have to, be the emergency services or fire rescue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Nathan Fowley. I live at 31 Bonnie Street in Rockport, which is actually barely on the map, but it's the upper left with kind of a little diagonal cut out of it. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. I've lived in the area my entire life as well. And that is an extremely dangerous location to have an entrance. It does drop very quickly, very abruptly. It's diagonal from the post office and there's been numerous accidents there. That light is also a very tricky one right there, so any additional traffic I think would really, you know, impede some of the resources of our EMS. They would be responding to events there. I also did just want to echo that even though my property is further away, there is still some concerns around drainage. My neighbor's house has been bought and sold a few different times and they've had to put in three or, maybe three or four different leach fields already. And then even on these wet spring days, I still get a wafting aroma of stool because it's not done correctly. Because they cannot figure out how to do it in a way that doesn't backflow. So you get those nice warm spring winds and trying to sit out on your, you know, enjoy your backyard and you're unable to do so. So I have some concerns about that. I do also want to mention that even with the distance between this and my home, the backyard is wet. It's wet all spring, dries out late summer. I cannot grow a garden in it. Three inches down is wet all year round. I could not raise chickens there. It's too wet. And that's at quite a distance. And the area that's being proposed is quite a bit lower in elevation to that. So I do think there are some legitimate concerns. I do recognize the need for housing in our area. I think that is paramount and the need for jobs is more so. The size of the properties is incredibly small in my opinion. I think that most people in Rockport and most people in Maine expect a little bit of privacy and this does not allow for that. I would expect that most sizes of the properties to be somewhere around closer to two acres, which would make this project about half the size it's proposed now. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then I'll close the public comment period for this application. So the board is welcome to take any things they heard and address them, or the applicants are welcome to take anything they heard. Again, we're not planning to vote on this tonight. I will mention that one of the things that came up a few times is the condition of the groundwater on the property. It is our responsibility as a board to, if you pursue this to the next preliminary date, we need to do a site walkthrough of the property. And that would be arranged at the same time that we review your documents, your further developed documents. So there is a need for us to actually witness that, just to address that.
Ryan, where are we on the, where are we on the extension of the sewer line out 90?
Yeah, we're still contemplating that. I mean, there's a, to answer your truth, I don't know. There was the vote to do the whole sewer project that was voted down, so we're reevaluating what to do on it.
Ryan, you haven't reviewed this application in terms of its applicability with the zoning, have you?
In terms of lot sizes, they meet the lot size requirements for that level, just very preliminarily.
So you have and you found that, given the lot sizes indicated, they do meet the
Correct.
The minimum lot size?
Correct.
Okay.
You gentlemen are going to develop, going to build houses as opposed to simply sell lots?
Correct.
Yeah.
Based on what you know so far, what do you think approximate price point of the houses that you're going to be marketing would be?
I would say it's starting at 500, depending on the lot size and the size of the home.
Yeah, so much for workforce houses.
It's, it's not that, it's, it's not, I guess, in my opinion is like, I, I've bought and sold houses and that's what I've been doing for a long time. I renovated myself. And I've built myself to come to a certain point and, you know, when I sell a house at a lower price, I'm selling to a younger family. Right? And so sometimes people that have lived in houses for a long time that have not such a great house, they sell their house to someone that needs the house and then they buy a nicer house. So with the lot sizes and all that stuff, none of this is set in stone. This was just kind of like, oh, you know, we looked at the wetlands, we looked at where the the creek went through and all that stuff. But it is, it's really good information to hear from the actual neighbors, like what's going on in there. Because there's only so far you can walk into a property when it's, you know, when there's a lot of snow. And when it is cold outside too, it's also frozen, so you don't know that it's wet as well.
Yeah, we started these discussions with Craig in January, so I, I wanted to thank everybody for their comments too. It was really very helpful for us as well.
One other comment that I wanted to make was I tried to read through the, read through the soil report. And it's very professionally made and it's made for professionals. And I am not one. And so I have not a clue as to what I'm looking at in terms of whether these lots are buildable, what the situation is with the soils. I don't understand the nomenclature. I would need something a lot more, a lot better explained at a lower level to understand what, how buildable and how reasonable it is to put in 25 houses into this, or any houses.
Well, I think 25 houses was very ambitious of us and we kind of, like I said, we went by the wetlands and the creek. And we gave it to someone to design it because obviously I don't have the skills to do that. I can build a house, but I can't do the computer stuff. But, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought.
That's okay. I understand, we understand this is preliminary. This is the whole point of a preliminary
Yeah.
Application is a conversation.
Yeah.
About, about what you would like to do and what we would like to have done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I do feel like 500,000 isn't a huge amount in comparison to what the, what people make nowadays, especially for newer homes and developments. And, you know, I was asking my friends that are doctors and that are nurses and I didn't realize how much nurses actually make, especially if you have two, two incomes coming from nursing. They make tons of money more than I do, you know, in just renovating houses.
More than most people.
Yeah. And my friends, like my friend Jordan, he's a nurse and he's just like, none of my friends can find any houses in Rockport. They would love to buy a house. So that's the one thing that we're trying to bring. I know 500 sounds like a lot, but.
Do you think your friend is going to buy a $500,000 house?
He would with his income, yes. You know, like the house that I just recently bought was in Union. I used to live in Rockport as well. It was 450,000 and it was an 1850s house. And the reason why I love the old house is because it has so much character. And with these, we're just trying to get people into the area, you know, and getting them homes as well. But like I said before, I want to bring, you know, as many people from this area that like carpenters and all that stuff to come and build it with us. I do not want to outsource to people that are outside of this area.
I understand. Thank you.
I will say that the, the comment that Sam made, which is to have somebody on your team that is well-versed in the town ordinance, the subdivision ordinance especially, and all the requirements that will have to be met is probably an advisable thing. There is somewhat of a high bar to be met and it's not simply a matter of whether we or the public likes it or not. It's really, does it meet the letter of our ordinance? And in terms of like, our opinions on what we like and don't like shouldn't really be entering into it. We're relying on the ordinance and adjudicating that. We're standing in place of it. We also seek some, as we say, some guidance from a document that was put together 21 years ago, the comprehensive plan, to give us a sense of what the people of 21 years ago thought of Rockport. Hopefully that'll be updated and approved by the voters in June. But that's the thing we look to for the spirit of how does Rockport want to develop? And what you're clearly doing is something that's future-looking. And so I'd encourage you to familiarize yourself with our comprehensive plan to see, like, is this in the spirit of what the Rockport has established that they want their town to be? Issues such as wetlands are really non-negotiable. It's not like we can approve something that is in a wetland, like we just can't.
Absolutely.
And nor is it feasible for you to build in a wetland. So those are basically, we're, we're here just to measure the facts and make sure the facts have been presented. We don't come at it with technical expertise, although some of us have certain technical expertise, but we're not expected to be technical wizards on this stuff. So we're trusting that a professional package will be put together and that somebody's got a stamp on it that we can, we can put trust in. And basically, we're, we're holding the trust of the voters to, to carry out that. So all that's to say is like, make sure you've got, you know, everything in the list. And I think you might stick around and see the site plan application for the next project, which is really just with, by a company who's well-familiar with our ordinances, going down through the list is here's where we prove it. Here's where we prove it. Here, here's where we prove it.
Right.
It makes it our jobs easier and it makes it our, our decisions easier. So that was, that was my only comment on, on this, but welcome the board's comments as well.
Yeah, and again, with the limitations that sound like there are on that site, looking into the cluster development rules and regulations that we have in this town would probably help alleviate some of the restrictions you're going to have around the green space and the wetlands and things like that. There's, there's ways to kind of make all that work a little bit better than what you've presented.
Okay.
So read through and have somebody who understands what that is if you have to ask questions of.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any comments? Okay, so like I said, Orion will guide you into the next step when, after this meeting, but not directly after this meeting, but. But tomorrow. And yeah, so it's, it's those things. We have a site walkthrough. We review a set of documents and then there'd be a final review after that.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
The public is welcome to comment on anything that comes after this. I'm sorry, we did open and close it. The public comment period, so there'll be more to come for sure. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda. The next item on our agenda is a site plan review application for the parcels located at 535 West Street in Rockport. Parcel is identified as tax map, 25 Lot 101 and 101-100, which is owned by Midcoast Recreation Center, Inc., MRC. Applications being represented by Andrew Hedrich of Gartley and Dorsky Engineering and Surveying.
I'm going to do a little bit of old school and new school here, so. I find it easier to point to things on a plan that I have right in front of me that you guys can see.
You might have to coordinate with Jeff also to make sure that that's, whatever you're presenting can.
Be on a camera.
Be on camera, but. Okay, thank you. So again, we'll do this where the applicants can present the project. We'll take clarification questions only because we're going to go through this in detail and then open it for public comment. And then we'll go through it in detail. So welcome. Happy to have you. And if you'd like to give us, this is a application for a revision to a previously approved site plan. That site plan was reviewed by not us. So many previous generation of, of people on the board. So if you could also just briefly describe the MRC's mission and its involvement in the community, what the business of the MRC is, we'd appreciate that as well.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. My name is Andrew Hedrick. I'm a civil engineer from Gartley and Dorsky. Right down the street here. I have Rick Bresnahan next to me. He is a building, the chairman of the building committee. There's a Karen Higgins with us here tonight as well. She's a board member of MRC. And Jesse Simko, who is the arena and operations director. So we've kind of got somebody from everybody in the facility here. So we are here for a site plan amendment. We have prepared an application that's suitable for a full site plan review. We wanted to make sure it was inclusive and you had everything we were looking at. So MRC is an existing facility that was constructed and approved in 2001. It includes a hockey rink and some tennis courts. The hockey rink has the capacity to have 300 fans in the facility and 123 participants actually playing hockey. In addition to that, there's four tennis courts in there. And then there's concessions and the staff members that use the existing facility. So the existing facility has an entrance road that's off Route 90. This is all in place. Everything on the plan in front of you right there actually exists today and it was all previously permitted. It received the local permitting and it received the DEP permitting. So here's the existing entrance along Route 90. There's a nice wide entrance down here that goes in and then the road kind of traverses up and around and enters into the, there's the existing building and here's the existing parking lot. So we have those, those pieces already in place today. Back in 2001, when this process was reviewed and approved, required a stormwater management permit. Give them a little sight. Thank you. A stormwater management permit from DEP for the wetland, I mean, for the impervious area that was created. So there was a lot of buffers that were put in place along the back here, on the fronts. That's how they handled the stormwater back in 2001. The standards are a little different now, but we'll get into those a little bit later. There was also minimal wetland impacts. When they did that, there was a couple of fingers that was up in here and down in here. It was less than 4,300 square feet when they originally did the process. But back to the entrance permit, we had to work with DOT. So anything on Route 90 requires an entrance permit from the Department of Transportation. And at that point in time, when you have a certain number of trips, you're also required to do a full movement permit as well as part of the entrance permit. So what that means when you do a full movement permit is they look at your existing, the proposed facility. They look at the traffic that's anticipated to enter the site. They do traffic counts in the area. They kind of look at all the intersections and kind of go through the full investigation of that area. This DOT requires the applicant to do that. So the applicant did that back in 2001. They came up with a suitable entrance location, suitable entrance width, and they got a permit from DOT to do that entrance. So moving forward with today, we're proposing to do a new building expansion. So here's the proposed site plan and it's, it's basically a zoom-in of the access road. It's down here. The, the entrance road is down in this location here. Here's the existing parking lot. And then here's the existing building that is there today. We are proposing to add a new building that's 144 feet by 130, 143 feet to this location that will house eight indoor pickleball courts slash tennis courts as well as a C-fit. We're proposing additional exterior tennis courts, four new tennis courts on the outside of the building. Then there's also this area down this lower section that was kind of a grass overflow parking area that they used a lot for hockey tournaments whenever they were. That was originally part of the permitting process that was included. They just always have grassed that over and they've kind of used it just in the winter. As part of this project, what we're proposing to do is, is kind of make that more permanent. They're going to actually pave it, fill it in, make the drainage work and make it kind of a permanent solution to kind of pick up parking year-round. There's a lot of, so all these felt, this is a stormwater underdrain soil filter down here. This is another stormwater underdrain soil filter here that is proposed. This project has a significant amount of impervious area associated with it. We're proposing to collect all the new impervious area, kind of discharge it down into these treatment facilities as we go through. There's a number of lighting, lights that come up the access road. There's a number of lights along the building. We're proposing to. We're proposing to kind of continue with the tradition of those lights and how they look and how they feel. There'll be some additional lights kind of added to the building along the side there. And they're also proposing to potentially light the tennis courts as well. All those lights will be the kind of the shielded dark sky fixtures. You won't see the bulb, the lights won't go up, kind of meet all your ordinance requirements. We put all that information in the packet as we kind of look through here. One of the big things with this site to know is that we're not increasing any of the water demands. We're not increasing any of the septic demands. We're not increasing the peak traffic flow to the site. So based on how this facility currently works, adding the pickleball courts to it doesn't align with like the traffic generated and the wastewater generated and the water generated requirements for primarily the hockey rink. I mean, that's, that's the big traffic. That's the big water use. That's the big septic use. It's associated with those hockey rinks and those large tournaments they hold where you have 300 fans in and out of there. You have 120 people playing hockey and officials and all that. So those pickleball courts will not be used at the same time this facility isn't fully functioning. They might have a few people playing on them, but they're not gonna have multiple tournaments or anything like that that they're gonna compete with the usage of the facility and the wastewater and the water and the traffic. So that, I think that's important to kind of understand. As we go through this packet, I've, as you pointed out previously, actually, I've included your ordinance sections for site plan review, performance standards. I provided a clear kind of list on what is in each one of those and I provided specific responses to them. I think it's important to understand where a permitting is today. So this project requires a site law, the Site Location of Development Act permit from DEP. So what that is, is a very substantial permit application that once you create more than three acres of impervious area, you have to get a site law permit. So for those of you not familiar with a site law permit, it's very extensive. There's about 25 different sections of a site law permit, including erosion control, soil conditions, wildlife habitats, wetland impacts. They go through a number of things very closely, groundwater impacts, water demands. So it goes on and on and on and you have to prepare that, submit, provide DEP with information, how you can meet the standards for each one of those prior to them approving your permit for that. So we have submitted that application actually more than a year ago. DEP, we were, I was hoping to have that permit in hand today. They actually asked us for an extension today. So they have it. They've actually drafted the permit application and it's currently being reviewed by the person that's gonna sign that application. So we're well along the way. We've been able to meet and work with them through this process. We've made everything, met all the, their points and everything they've asked for. We provided to them. The other large permit is associated with the wetland impacts. We are proposing to impact about 20,000 square feet of wetlands. So we have obtained a wetland impact permit from the Army Corps of Engineers already. We've provided that to Orion, so he has seen a copy of that permit. We just got that, I think last week or the beginning of this week. It all blends together a little bit there. So we have satisfied that requirement and kind of working with Army Corps, we had to do the same thing. We had to demonstrate how are we gonna minimize impacts of the wetlands, how are we gonna protect the habitat. We do have a vernal pool, a significant vernal pool that we have identified during our wetland delineation. And we have, there's a 250-foot buffer associated with that that you have to maintain. You're allowed to impact about 25% of that buffer with permitting is what they, the general guidance they give you. But because this site was in place so long ago, some of this is grandfathered. The only area that we're proposing to impact within the habitat is down here. And, and Army Corps has approved that and DEP is soon to approve that area. So that's it. It's that little critical habitat. So this is the vernal pool. And then this kind of is the big 250-foot setback. All of this is grandfathered and then this little tiny section here. And the reason we're doing that little area is just so we can push that parking out as far as we can to kind of get as much parking we can. It's a flat area now and we're kind of just picking up a little corner of that, kind of fully extend that into that area. So we are well on our way with permitting. We should be in good shape. I honestly think we'll have that DEP permit within days, you know, if not a week or so at most. But, so that's kind of the general summary of everything. Our packet includes a ton of information that I'd like to kind of systematically go through with you. And I'm open to any questions you have. I know I dumped a whole lot of information on you. This plan is very, very busy. We do have architectural plans in there. We've shown you the elevations. But again, they're gonna kind of construct this building along the face. So here's the new building. They're gonna put a little 12-foot wide connector along the edge here. And then they're gonna do some, some minor vent well, some renovations internally to the building to kind of connect the spaces a little bit more fluidly than they currently are. But I'm open to questions and I'd love to go through the packet with you.
Okay, thank you. Any clarification questions that's just, you know, basic, because we're gonna go through this in detail.
How many days a year are devoted to hockey tournaments, would you say?
That's, that's a great question.
Yeah. We just went through them. We had, we had five weeks of straight hockey tournaments. That's two days out of the week, Saturday and a half a day Sunday. So really, we're, we're talking.
So that's 10 days?
Yeah.
And that's just once a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
End of the season.
Yeah, the end of the season.
And all those facilities are designed for those to be every day. So the septic's designed to be every day, the water use is designed to be every day, the entrance, every day.
No, that I already know.
Yeah.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm just concerned about, you made, you made the statement that the pickleball courts will only be open a little bit during hockey tournaments. And so I'm, I'm wondering, what does a little bit mean and what kind of time period? So now I know the time periods. I still don't know what a little bit means.
Yeah, so, so for clarification, the intent, what they have informed me is that they would not be having a pickleball tournament the same time they run, say, a hockey tournament.
How many people are on an average pickleball team?
Four.
Okay.
Four on a court, yeah.
Four on a court or four on a.
Correct. Four on a court. There's two on per team.
Two on per team. Oh, okay.
I think we'll get into those kinds of details in a bit. Sorry, I, I did forget to ask the board if they, anyone would like to identify a conflict of interest that anyone might have with this application? Hearing none? Okay. So I'd actually like to open the public comment period. Same rules as last time. Come on up to the microphone, introduce yourself. If you have any comments about this application, please limit to three minutes.
Yeah, my name's Dave, my name's David Maddox. I live on West Street, corner of Bonnie and, and 90, which is just east of the entrance. And we've had a particular problem with people passing on the right when somebody's going eastbound and turning in there. And what I, from what this gentleman said, it sounds like there's been a traffic analysis at one point, but both my wife and I have had difficulties with just leaving our driveway or checking the mail. So I'm just wondering if there's been consideration for this expansion? Because as it stands, it's already been an issue for us. And I don't know if that, what one can do to help alleviate those concerns, but if the traffic light's warranted or whatever, I don't know. So my suggest, my question is whether or not the traffic flow in and out needs to be reevaluated at this point. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Stephanie Maddox. I'm Dave's wife. Live in the same house. I guess what, what Dave didn't mention, what I didn't hear come up is I feel like you're kind of minimizing, from what I'm hearing, this use of MRC, which, let me just say, I, I think it's great that it's expanding. It's a wonderful thing for the community. I'm sure I'll be over there playing pickleball. But as far as the hockey tournaments go, it's busy during those hockey tournaments that they've mentioned, but it's also very busy during high school hockey games. And also there are events throughout the year where, like, like the roller derby and things like that where there are so many people there, there's actually been cars along Route 90 parked. So that anyways, it is a facility that is, that is used and a real asset to the community in that regards. But I think a traffic study from the state is definitely warranted at this point in time for, to anyways, to evaluate this asset and our community and the safety on Route 90. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, thank you. Were there any other comments that were received online?
Sorry, there was a written comment that was received that I shared with the planning board, but that was the only one.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I'd like to close the public comment period. 6:32. So the first thing we have to do is check for the completeness of this application and then we'll go through it in more detail. So. We've identified the zone to be of this property. Sorry, I don't have the map pulled up. Do you have it, Andrew?
Oh, I'm sorry.
907.
907.
I've got it right here.
Thank you. Identified the use as a recreational facility. Is this an allowed use? So turning to chapter 900, table 917. Type of use of this building, let's see. Recreational, 907.
Yep.
Indoor and outdoor, permitted use and conditional use. Okay. So it is a permitted use. That's good to know because it's been there for 20 years. We have to evaluate, meets the setback in lot coverage and I think we've identified that. It clearly meets the setback and clearly is within the lot coverage per 918, but might as well check. Oh, this is an older ordinance. No, it isn't. You have that pulled up?
60% is the max.
60% you're.
Our proposed is 18.1.
18.1, okay. And, oh, and we actually should have, sorry, I'm skipping ahead. Orion, you reviewed this application when it came into your office for completeness.
Correct.
So we should take a motion as to the completeness of this application. Can I get a motion that this application is complete? Thank you, Jan.
Seconded.
Sam, any further debate? All those in favor? Five opposed, zero. Five, zero, zero. Let's see. So we've, I think, found that this is the, the proposed use is allowed within the zone and so we should have a motion to accept the proposed use as allowed within zone 907.
So moved.
Thank you, Sam. Do you have a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded. Jan? Any further discussion on proposed use? Okay, all those in favor? Five opposed, zero.
Jeff, where are you with the land use ordinance?
Thank you for asking. So that was both in a nutshell, it was chapter 1300, which was completeness of the application, which I threw in there in the middle. And then while we're in chapter 900, zoning review. So we did a motion to approve that it meets the requirements of chapter 900 to approve use. So next, we're going to chapter 1300, section 1305, the performance standards chapter. So 1305, and I think actually the document that Gartley and Dorsky has put together is actually a good one to follow because it's got their answers in it. So I don't know if you have that in front of you, but it's probably going to be most useful to have the answers right there. So 1305.
Page 11.
Thank you. Okay, preserve and enhance the landscape. So they're saying there's no changes to the landscape other than the existing landscape will remain along the access road? So you would be doing some tree removal for the, the new tennis courts?
Yeah, absolutely. I think this is, this is about, you know, 150 feet into the site. And they, this is essentially where we'd have to remove the trees. So there'll be a clearing limit that this will all have to be removed along the edge here. This is a little bit of field up in this area, but the back half is all woods. So there's quite a bit of woods that'll have to be removed. But we're not going to, it's not in close proximity to any of the butters or anything. We're gonna preserve the access road. Like, so this is after that kind of serpentine, you know, entrance that comes in there and bends around the corner. So you won't, you won't be able to see that from Route 90.
Okay, and that's the operative thing is that the, the building is determined, or we evaluate differently based on whether it can be seen from Route 90 or not.
Right, right, exactly. I think that's the goal is to make sure that we don't clear right to the edge of the road there. There's quite a bit of buffers requirement along that and then we'd have to landscape if you could be seen from Route 90 there.
Right.
This can't be seen. We're not gonna reduce the visible, visibility, if you will, or increase the visibility.
Right, okay.
So it'll remain as is and that's why I kind of made that statement from Route 90.
The next section is soils and erosion control. So you touched on the, the DEP permitting that you're expecting to get. And, let's see, just parsing through your, your statement here.
Would you like me to comment? Did you want to read?
I'm just wondering if there's anything else in our ordinance that needs to be addressed in terms of soils and erosion control that is not addressed by the DEP permitting process?
Yeah, so DEP is actually on, they're more conservative than the ordinance is. The ordinance doesn't give very specific. It just basically says comply with the local and, you know, you know, standards. So there's, there's nothing there. So primarily, when you're looking at erosion control, you're making sure you're not, you know, generating, you know, channelized flow from your site. You're making sure everything that's disturbed during construction is properly stabilized. You're making sure you have silt fences up around the, the property. And if you have high flow areas from water discharges, it's handled with either a vegetative mat or like a ripout mat. So all those are incorporated into the designs. All those have been through DEP's review. We're, like I said, we're in the home stretch there. But they are definitely kind of the, the know-all is DEP and then the local things are. But generally, there's, there's nothing, and I know there's nothing in yours that jumps out that is in addition to those standard requirements.
Yeah, I mean, our, our, if we so choose to approve the project, we'll be conditional on the DEP permit. Not that that really matters because you don't have that, you don't have, absolutely, anyway. Okay. Any other comments on soils and erosion control from the board? Okay, let's move on to vehicular access. So I'm just gonna read this out, the explanation that Andrew's provided. Says, "No changes are proposed to existing vehicular access from Route 90. Loading areas are off-street parking demand. No increase in peak vehicular traffic is anticipated as a result of the proposed building and exterior tennis courts. However, this project includes expanding the parking area by converting grass overflow parking into a permanent lot." And I think, Jan, this is getting something you brought up in the early questioning, which was the increase of use, increase of demand perhaps.
Yes.
Would you like to comment further on it?
Well, I'm beginning to understa, I don't play pickleball, so I'm beginning to understand that there's a limited number of people on a court. That we're not talking teams of five. It's not like basketball, for example. Teams of five against five. So, so if they're gonna, there're gonna be eight new courts, that's maybe 32 people at a time that are gonna be occupying those courts, which means about 30 cars or thereabouts. My only concern about, about taking away green space for, for, for parking spaces is that there are ways of doing it with semi-permeable blocks or whatever so that you don't lose the entire erosion control, the entire ability for the land to, to absorb the water as opposed to run it off. I presume that you're controlling that as best as, as you can in the new parking areas. It's parking for what, for how many, how many cars did you?
Uh, we're, this.
About 30?
Yeah, so we're adding 32 spaces. Yeah, yeah. So this had, this law has about 54 spaces. So just to kind of address the perme- So just to kind of address the permeable pavement, permeable. So the challenge with that, we're in Maine. We've tried this several times. We've tried to do, you know, gravel lots. We've tried to do these processes. However, DEP doesn't give you any credit for a permeable pavement because all of that ends up going through. And once you get through the surface layer, you're now into your gravel layer that you have to put in place, and then the water just sits there. So you still have to pick it up because our ground soil conditions are so poor, as we've heard earlier. It's water tables high, there's clay, there's a lot of bedrock ledge. So the water doesn't go anywhere. So you still have to account for it at some point. So by paving the lot and taking control of it that way, I can prevent the soil from moving around on it. I can create a curb line, put catch basins down it, which is exactly what I've done here. There's a curb that runs along the back. We're going to catch all that water in these catch basins, and we're going to put it into a proper treatment cell. So those treatment cells, like these properly, they're stormwater treatment measures where the water will sit in there, it'll filter through special material to make sure all the pollutants are gone. It'll control the peak flow, and then it'll be properly discharged, kind of slowly discharged out of that. So by making them permanent, it allows it for ease of maintenance, and it just kind of gives us control of that water rather than letting it go in and trying to pick it up with some piping, and it's just not as effective.
And all this is fine with the Department of Environmental?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
If they're happy on it.
Yeah, yeah, no, they are.
I'm no expert, Jan, but I think that the idea that permeable pavers, or even grass for that matter, reduce runoff significantly is not true. It's like asphalt clearly is just going to be all 100% runoff. But grass in many conditions is the same thing. It just, water just runs off.
Especially if it's compacted with vehicles on it and whatnot.
So you've been using that temporary parking area in the past?
Yeah, yeah.
But I would say that it's 50/50 on whether it's usable or not, you know. So it was, it's frozen, then there's mud. And to address what they were talking about earlier for the high school hockey games and the parking sometimes going out to Route 90, it's because that area is not accessible. So somebody parks, and then all the other cars can't go in. It's not easily accessible. And so those 52 cars that could be in there, that's what pushes people out onto Route 90. So this will help alleviate that problem.
So would it be accurate to say that your contention is that you're not increasing the demand for parking, you're addressing the current demand for parking?
Without a doubt.
Yeah.
Well, right.
Yes, okay.
As it is now, they park on both sides of the, well, one side of the road coming in. And get them off of that too.
I agree with the comment that was made that parking on Route 90 is something I would wish people to avoid. I feel the same way about Marge Jones Field, for the record, that parking on Route 90, people are using Marge Jones despite it being closed to traffic, and then just parking on Route 90. And I think that creates an unsafe situation, but.
Just to be clear, I kind of want to summarize all that. So when this was originally approved, it was approved for 130 spaces when it was originally done. So it had 130 spaces that accommodated for this, the test courts, all the facilities in that location. This will increase the number. So if we did it, assuming everything's filled, everything's max, we get to the number that we're presenting, 162 spaces. So we're able to get to that even with the addition. But what we know is these are going to be used in the AM, these are going to be used in the AM, and this is going to be a PM situation. So it's going to open up those spaces during those large events while still accommodating and meeting all the ordinance requirements.
So when you have a, I don't mean to hog the floor here, so please just, never jump in. When you have a hockey tournament that has your peak crowd size, is that, does that restrict the MRC's ability to use the facilities for other things? Like you've said that you're not going to add to the demand, although it sort of defies logic that if you were to expand the building, it adds to demand. But you're saying that the peak demand.
It's peak demand, correct.
Right, the peak demand will not be changed.
Correct.
Okay.
I will also say from my facility operator.
If you don't mind, could you step to the mic? Because people on our recording watching this can't hear you back there.
My name's Jesse Simko.
Thank you.
And I'm an arena director, but also do facility operations. And it is something within our management that we make sure we're taking account for is when we're holding a large event, we're meeting regularly to talk about, do we have conflicting things? Is this going to cause a problem? And we do our best to manage those aspects so that it does not create a problem. But Rick was absolutely right that a lot of times when we are having overflow problems, it is often due to not being able to have the extra parking spaces, which this would provide.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yes, Peter.
I just had a couple of questions. I mean, we were on vehicle, and then we were also talking about parking, so.
Yeah, parking is the next one, so it's.
No, that's fine. So I guess in terms of, if this were an original site plan and not a revision, would it trigger a traffic study?
I'm not certain the answer to that. I think we've had traffic studies done before. We can request a traffic study.
But it's not part of an original, if I were coming before you with an original site.
It doesn't always have to be done. I think there, I don't know what the threshold to trigger that is.
So when, yeah, so when you get into, so these entrances are controlled by DOT. So they're the ones that are going to review it. They're the ones that are going to approve it. Generally, you have to do a traffic movement study, which is they just analyze the entrances and the exits and kind of look at that. When you have 100 vehicle trips per peak hour. So that's per peak hour, 100 vehicles leaving in one hour. So this one has 136 vehicles per peak hour leaving. The next time they would want to take another bite of that and re-review it is when you would get to the 200 peak hour volume. And this will be far short of that.
But that's the DOT, so the.
That's DOT, correct.
For example, if you had a subdivision and the town said I was on the planning board, you would definitely have a traffic study, you know, if you felt it was warranted.
You could request it, I believe, and in certain cases, it would be required if the development was large enough. I don't know what that threshold is again, but it's discretionary and also in some cases mandatory.
Well, it was a question that came up earlier.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And so.
And it came up last time in the last meeting when we were here too, right? Like, and that's that same piece. It only becomes mandatory when you hit the 100 trips, and it's in or out, like, it's not just everybody leaving or not, but 100 trips per peak hour. So like, when the traffic is the worst on 90.
Well, just to be fair, when they did that 20-plus years ago, I'm sure if they did it today, it hopefully, the business has improved.
No, so generally, so they didn't, so that's not how those traffic movement permits work. So what they do is they use a set of published rules. They've done several studies. So you would look at the book, it's called the ITE manual for vehicle trips. And so it's the Institute of Traffic Engineers. They create this manual. It's thousands of pages long. And it has every single item and every single use it would use. So if it was a school, or if it was a hockey arena, and it would generate a number of estimated trips per peak hour for the proposed facility. So that's what you do. You would find.
So it wasn't a real-time traffic study?
No, so I'm getting there. So that's how you would first identify how many anticipated peak trips you would generate. That's where the 136 number came from, based on the proposed facility use and those rules, which haven't changed much. They adjust them every once in a while, depending on the volume, but they haven't changed significantly. And then the movement part of it goes into, then they analyze all the intersections in close proximity to the project to make sure that they're not going to congest the intersection issues with the proposed anticipated peak traffic. So they went down to Route 90, Route 17, they counted trips down there. They counted trips at any of the other intersections just to make sure that the trips they were counting, plus the ones they were proposing, were not going to cause, they call it a level of service, it's how fast the vehicles are moving, weren't going to impact the level of service on Route 90. So that's what the movement permit does, and that's why once you get into a peak one-way trips per hour of 100, that's when it trips that threshold. That's when you have to get into that. So generally, that would be 100 houses would trip that threshold to get you into that peak hour because they're one per hour usually on that PM hour. So that's just a clarification.
So a traffic study was done back in.
Correct, in 2001. Yep, I have it right here. This is a traffic movement study that was conducted where they actually did that. That was submitted last time when we went through all this, and DOT reviewed it and approved it. They looked at potentially doing a widening and all those things, but they deemed it wasn't necessary.
Does DOT update those for like the Route 90 or Route 17?
Will they update the counts there for the movement?
They update those counts?
Yeah, so when, that's where we get into that, when you go from, say, the existing, the 136 per peak hour, if we were going to generate 70 more to get up over 200, then they would want us to reassess. They'd want us to then kind of look at that facility and reassess. But to do that, we'd have to add another hockey rink essentially, because that's about what that equivalency is. So we'd have to add a second hockey rink to get to those type of numbers for them to reassess. So adding, you know, eight trips per peak hour to this isn't going to come close to tripping that.
I'm guessing though, my question is, even though the traffic entrance and exits and entrances to MRC maybe remained pretty much constant from the initial building until now, the traffic on Route 90 may have increased substantially.
Yeah, so DOT would address that internally to figure out how to, because it's not MRC's issue.
Okay, but they don't have to reissue a permit, do they?
Right, correct. So it was not really MRC's issue at that point. If there's more congestion, which I'm sure is likely, we all know that intersection down there is a mess. You know, so if there's more congestion generated, that's when they start looking at how to uncongest that. And if we were going to do another project, or a project, a new project going across the street, that's when they would kind of look at those things and make that applicant kind of re-change their entrance. But DOT wouldn't step in and make you revise your entrance or do anything different after a permit has been issued. You're good forever until you modify the physicality of it, try to change it, or you increase those peak trips up and change the use of the entrance.
Yeah, that was my question.
Okay, we're still on parking and circulation. Do you have parking and circulation comment?
No, we did not.
Okay. I think we touch on access again, but moving to surface water drainage.
I'm sorry, can I just ask one more question about parking?
Sure, yeah, go ahead, Peter.
You said that now with the 1660-plus proposed parking spaces, you'd meet the requirements.
Correct.
Are the requirements dictated by square footage, by use?
Yeah, they vary. They vary. So like the hockey rink is one for four spaces, and the tennis courts are basically four per court, you know, so that's how they would do that.
That's sort of determined by use then?
That's determined by your ordinance. Yep, exactly. So your ordinance has a parking indicator, and it identifies how many spaces you need for each use of the building, and that's what that table works out to. Yep.
Thank you, okay. Surface water drainage, so your narrative addresses the DEP permitting aspect of it. Our ordinance actually addresses something a little bit different, which is that it would affect neighboring properties. Would anything you're doing in this amendment affect neighboring properties additionally?
No, so I'll be quick and brief, but so when you are a site law project, the stormwater management requirements, you have to do both quality and quantity. So that's the big difference. When you're doing regular stormwater, it's just quality. But when it's site law, you have to actually do quantity assessments as well. So you have to design the stormwater management system so it does not increase post-development. So you measure it, you determine your exit points for the water leaving the site. You quantify how much that is before the development's in place. And then you go back and you redo those numbers again after you put your development in place and change grass surfaces and wood surfaces into impervious area, and then you quantify it again. So it always increases when you add impervious area, of course. But what we do is we catch that stormwater runoff in these filters. And they're about 18 inches to two feet deep. Water will enter those from the surface, fill those up. It'll slowly infiltrate into and through the material, and then it's discharged out through small pipes along the bottom of the system here. So this one, there's a discharge pipe right here. This one has a discharge pipe kind of down here. And then there's like an overflow structure here that will kind of allow the water to kind of slowly overflow the surface there if you get anything in addition to snow and ice and all that that kind of forces it out that section. But it slows it down, controls it, and it makes sure your peak flows leaving the site are not higher post-development.
So in brief, it'll be better after this development than it currently is?
Correct. We were able to reduce the stormwater discharge after the development compared to the pre-development conditions.
Okay.
As I say, my only question around that was if it ultimately was heading back down towards the Robinson Drive piece, but we've already gotten, correct me if I'm wrong, Orion, Public Works has already signed off on this?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're good there. And if it's, peak isn't changing, then it's not going to change regardless.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely. And we made sure that Robinson Drive cove was nice and large.
I'm sure nature will find a way.
Okay, any other comments on surface drainage? Existing utilities, no proposed changes to the existing utilities, right? So where's the stormwater drains, public utilities? Special features of development, exposed storage areas, machinery installation services, truck loading, utility buildings, similar structures. I don't think that applies. Exterior lighting, you've mentioned these will be dark sky compliant.
Well, thank you for putting every single one of those into the application of the description.
Absolutely.
I had a great time going through each one of them to make sure.
Well, I trimmed some of the, you get, so when you put those light fixtures in there, those features are like 30 pages long. There's a whole bunch of technical data in the middle that I don't even know what it is. I look at the light fixture, I look at the photometric shape of it all, and I try to provide that. So I did try to trim some of it up.
We're paid by the page, so it's good.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you very much.
Okay, jokes aside, any other comments on lighting?
Thank you truly though for laying it out because it does help alleviate the understanding and comments of like, you're going to put outdoor tennis courts. Actually, and so those are going to be lit tennis courts?
Correct, correct. Yep, there's lights. We actually included an electrical plan that shows where the lights are. They're basically running along the edge here. But they have very specific lights, again, that they're kind of focused straight down onto the tennis court so that we're not lighting up the sky, we're not lighting up any neighbors. And there's plenty of buffer. So it will be just like the lights in the parking lot, except it'll be directed towards the tennis courts. Nobody can see the lights from the parking lot when those things are on. It'll be very similar.
And those will be off at night?
Yes, I assume.
It's like really concentrating the bugs in one spot.
Emergency vehicular access, so we've got feedback from fire department, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and police department as well, just while we're here. And you said municipal services has had no issue with it. Water quality, so water quality, I think we've addressed. Air quality, I don't know if there's any impact to air quality? No negative impact, okay. Water supply, suitable, sufficient water supply for the needs. So will not increase the existing water demand. Again, going to your peak demand is what's driving this.
Yeah, exactly. One of the, I actually included probably another chart that you may not have needed, but I gave you a water table that showed the water usage for the facility. And what we found out when we actually ran the meter number versus what we had designed for is that there's almost 1,000 gallons a day of water that were designed for that's not being used. So most of that water ends up in for the rink. So we took those numbers out of it, and you look at how much water is actually used at the facility, how much actually ends up in the septic field, and there was 1,000 gallons less than the almost 3,000 that is designed to handle or used for water. So we're significantly less, and that's why we can add a couple of users, you know, over the course of the AM, and drinking out of a fountain, filling a water bottle, and using a restroom is not going to impact the peak.
So is the reason for that, that the rink's usage of water is just less than was anticipated?
No, I think it's the design standards are far more significant than the real use. And again, this is designed to have 300 fans in it every day. It's designed with 122 hockey players every day. So when you start adding that up, if we're only having 10 events a year, and you start taking those numbers out, all of a sudden, the average has dropped significantly, and that's where that water usage and demand comes from.
Do you literally have that many people that will be in attendance at the MRC? That 300-plus fans and 100-plus?
I would suspect on an occasion, there's probably.
High school tournaments, I mean, high school games.
Within a day or at the same time?
At nighttime, you know, the hockey games like on weeknights, Saturday nights, 6:30, 7:30.
And that's the peak. Okay, water supply, so that is 1305. That's actually the only section of 1300 that we have to review. Any further issues with section 1300, or can I get a motion to, let's see. A motion to accept that the proposed. A motion to accept that the proposed project meets the uh the requirements of thirteen oh five. Okay, moved by Jan, seconded by Tom, any further discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, not opposed. Okay, on to chapter eight hundred, general standards of performance. So this goes into um every little bit of things that may or may not apply. Starting with environmental soils and erosion control. Subject to the evidence of satisfactory subsurface soil conditions, I think we've talked about that. Plumbing code requirements shall be met, that's possibly also a code enforcement issue. DEP permit, we've talked about, is conditional. No nuisance or erosion based on the activity of the site. Temporary vegetation or mulching during construction, did you have a erosion control plan?
Oh, absolutely, yep, we uh we provided the plan, uh it's it's include, some of it's included on the site plan, we provided you the details, and we provided the narrative.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that actually, now remembering it. Are you removing earth materials from the site?
Yes, absolutely, yep, yep, we are, it'll be hauled off, you know, by a certified contractor and and they'll they'll discharge it, we're not mining materials.
Right.
Uh we're just removing the, you know, the material that can't be reused on site, I mean, the goal is to always reuse as much material as we can on site. If we're pulling back the loam, we're gonna try to reuse it on the side slope, so we'll try to minimize that to the the greatest extent. Um there'll probably be less offsite than there is br- onsite, there's a lot of fill that has to occur uh to get these tennis courts level, that's a long area, it only can be one percent slope, so there's three or four feet of fill down here, there's gonna be three or four feet of fill in the back section, so it'll be more on than off, but there'll still be material that can't be reused, that'll be have to haul.
Is there any evidence of hazardous materials in this?
No, no hazardous materials, no.
Okay. Let's see, what do we address from the removal of earth materials? Avoid hazards from excessive slopes or standing water. Operations shielded from surrounding properties, screening, unapplicable. No excavation near roads. Topsoil loam should be retained to cover all areas. Uh charity bond, the town recommended by the planning board, approved by the board, selection should be filed to the town clerk. Amount should be sufficient to guarantee conformity to the grant of approval. Not quite sure what that, how that applies to removal of earth materials.
Can you give me the page number?
Yes, eight dash one in our in our um ordinance, it's page fifty-one, I think. And it's item eight oh one dot two dot E.
Isn't all of that for its earthwork, like excavation and earthwork, and if we're to create a quarry or a pit?
I guess it's only yes.
For commercial purposes.
Purposes, yes, I missed that one bit. Removal of earth materials, it's all for commercial purposes, okay. Okay, water quality, um basically, it's all going to be treated, so nothing will be discharged untreated. Surface and stormwater drainage, we've talked about clearcutting, there'll be no clearcutting of trees within seventy-five feet with the public right of way. That's true. Nuisances, are there any additional, this, again, this is an amendment, are there any additional nuisances caused by this amendment?
No, there's no no changes to nuisances.
Okay. You can have nuisances, you just can't have additional nuisances. Lighting, we've talked about, um the place in view of any roadway or street. No flashing lights, buffers with landscape. Please, anybody stop me if they see somebody you wanna discuss. Um they're all downward facing lights, they're dark sky compliant. Uh will there be any additional, excuse me, maintenance equipment because of this, this work?
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they're gonna move some heating elements around, uh you know, they have, there's some mechanicals in this area that they're gonna move to the rear, uh they're gonna mount some stuff along the back, but nothing's gonna be outside what we're showing for the development area, which is, you know, a hundred and fifty feet from any neighbor or butter or anything like that.
Okay. Okay, now we're in industrial standards, and I don't think that applies to this. Okay, now we're in detailed eight oh three parking, loading, and driveway standards. Off-street parking and loading standards, so I think what we've determined is that this meets the peak use. And the the computations that are in our table in section eight oh three uh jive with what you've determined to be your peak use um requirement?
Yes, yeah, based on, a lot of it's based on what was originally reviewed and approved, you know, as far as like the the peak generation numbers. Kinda using what we did for that, cuz there's not a hockey rink on that table, you know, so that's what we went through before, and those numbers were from, again, the same ITE manual, they also make a parking manual, same thing, references a whole bunch of options, so yes, it complies with those standards.
Do you do you know specifically on our table, if you have it in front of you, which of these that you chose to use as the computation?
No, so we used uh looking at what we did before, the the
Arenas?
The ice arena, yeah, was one per four seats, and then the tennis courts were one per four court.
Okay, court.
Or, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, four per each court.
Four per each.
Yeah, and then one per employee.
Yep. It's all off-street parking. There's no sharing of parking here, it's all for one operation. Landscaping of parking areas. Again, this is all screened from the right of way, so a lot of this doesn't apply. And driveway entrance standards, so um again, there's no change that's merited to the driveway entrance because of this.
Correct, correct, it will remain as is, yeah, it's currently meets requirements.
Meets requirements.
Needs load requirements, yeah, meets all the site distance, everything, yeah, it will not be changed.
Yeah, and if this were a new application, um although it's not, does it meet the current, like what it would be for our ordinance if it were a new application, did you even look at that?
Yeah, so the entrances, you don't specifically, I mean, it meets all the standard entrances, but you don't specifically get into like vehicle loads and how to deal with that, so it it does meet your ordinance, it does meet the dimensional requirements, it's actually, it's a pretty substantial entrance, we've seen it. It's got a nice wide width, it's got easy to access, and I think the the wider lanes were put in due to the fact that there is a higher load, and they wanna make sure vehicles aren't restricted coming in or out, uh so it does meet all the dimensional requirements, the ordinance doesn't get into vehicle flow, peak requirements, if that makes sense.
Yep. It does bring up a thought, Orion, that um we've addressed this in a couple of projects in my time, and I know Tom has, that we've had projects come to us on Route ninety or Route one, where the amount of parking, uh our ordinance would require a separate turnoff lane on the side of the road that the development is on, and our ordinance requires it, but the state DOT would not, it doesn't meet the state DOT's requirement.
Right, so that's an eight oh eight.
Is, yeah, it's an eight oh eight.
Yeah, access management.
Yeah, that's a challenge right there, is uh trying to dictate how the state's gonna handle, you know, those those roads there, quite honestly, so they're they're generally the ones that make that determination, that's their road, it's their right of way, they're gonna approve for safety.
Right, and what we've had to do is is provide as a board an exception to that that requirement, because we just can't require it.
Right.
Um but is there any thought that we'd clean our ordinance up to be in line with the state?
There, I mean, there is thought to that, and I I did send a question to our attorney to get an opinion on that, and our attorney, the, don't quote me on the, the, what I'm saying here, I'd have to pull the his email, but it was in the line of, yes, the MDOT permit applies, however, if the town ordinance says whatever it is the town wants, then that is the town's ordinance, so that in a nutshell is what he said.
So we just sit with the conflict between the two?
So the conflict between the two right now, but I do think that the town should look at our eight oh eight access management for both of those, um and in particular, probably wouldn't be a bad idea to get main DOT's opinion on that section when we get there, but just for their input.
Yep.
But, yes.
Okay.
I would say, in this particular case, a deceleration lane on the, for right-hand turns, I've never seen a problem turning into MRC from from the right.
Oh, yeah.
What we heard from tonight, from a comment that people across the street, I can understand if somebody's waiting because ninety is a very busy thoroughfare, and if people are coming from the west down there and trying to make a left-hand turn, I could see where you've got a lot of passing on the shoulder on the right.
Just like, just like uh ninety and Meadow Street.
Yeah, I mean.
All that at the high school. They wanna go into Meadow Street, people from the high school go around and whack the person going left.
Yeah, for the record, pa- passing somebody on the right is is illegal in the state of Maine.
It's our culture.
Understood, um but but that is, you know, and they're they're a piece of this, like, I mean, I know when it comes into these things, we we try to listen to what people have to say, and they come through and across, but similar to some of the issues, you know, that we heard around, you know, expansion around rock park granite was, you know, it's an enforcement issue, it it is not a planning board issue. Right, like, it's one of those things, we we did everything right, we did the traffic, did through, and if somebody's breaking the law to the point that it scares somebody who lives in front of it, then you know, that's an enforcement issue, that that's not something the planning board could have addressed, like, there's a law in place that's supposed to prevent that from happening. People are breaking the law.
Correct.
Okay, right, but like, that's, we've we've done as much as we can, the only thing we can do differently is shift the enforcement in that area. And I think that is under, make sure I wanted to put into the record, and that everybody understands that having people go out and around to the right does cause accidents, and that is why the state has made it illegal. All right, there we go, that's my piece.
I mean, I think frankly, any any business on a road where the speed limit is above forty-five is going to have trouble if it's a, you know, two-lane road.
Sure.
Turning left, turning right, anything, like, turning into a driveway is going to be trouble on a road that that's that fast. And that's kind of where we are structurally. I guess we'll get to that, um section eight oh four, cluster development, I would say does not apply. Section eight oh five, lots, I don't think we're doing anything here that that is challenged by that section.
I would agree.
Livestock control?
Think not.
I don't know, how many hockey games?
I was gonna say, depends on how we classify the hockey players.
I'm gonna skip over, is anything, does anyone wanna touch on any of these, might go too fast?
No, I think that's correct, I agree with everything so far.
Livestock control, mobile homes, nope.
You're not gonna do any blasting?
No, blasting.
So, yeah, eight oh eight.
Access management, so that's the, that's the entrance. Traffic access for single family development, two duplexes, access permit required what?
Side move.
What?
I think we've, I think we've met section eight hundred performance standards.
Well, we're still on eight oh eight, right?
You think there's nothing left? Yeah, I I let me look at the whole list, cuz I'm going through it bit by bit.
Yes.
Access management, that's what we just talked about, wireless telecom, no service drops, no home occupations, no wind energy systems, no blasting standards, itinerant peddlers, you're saying those don't apply.
He just did it quicker.
And you'd like to make a motion that uh all right, Tom.
Second.
Is seconded by Jan, all those in favor, and I'll state the motion, that this meets the requirements of general standards of performance, chapter eight hundred. One, two, three, four, five, versus zero. Okay, and the last part or second to last part is uh chapter one thousand, and I think a lot of this isn't going to apply as well. So one thousand, performance standards, so landscape plan requirements, we've reviewed. The landscaping, there will be trees added?
No, trees will are proposed, we're gonna utilize natural buffers that already exist, and we're gonna preserve them to the greatest extent we can, and we're not gonna encroach any closer to a hundred and fifty feet from Route ninety.
Right, and we have no screening requirement as long as that screen is maintained. So there's really no variety of, let me see. Front yard applicable. Architectural review standards, any comments from the board on that?
You're gonna make it look good with the other building?
Yeah, it's gonna match that, it's gonna be a metal building, uh you know, with the roof lines all lining, um it's gonna, it's gonna be very similar.
I would assume that was your plan.
Yeah, yeah, it will be hot pink, though. You still won't be able to see it from Route ninety.
Right. Yeah, I mean, a lot of this is really contingent on the screening, so, you know, long, monotonous facade designs, it doesn't matter because we're not gonna see it. And parking lot design, we've kind of touched on. Anything from chapter one thousand that anyone wants to talk about?
Any news signs or advertisers?
No.
I think we can go past that.
Okay, um is there a motion to accept the application meets the requirements of detailed standards of performance, chapter one thousand?
So moved.
Seconded.
Jan, Sam, any further discussion? All those in favor, one, two, three, four, five, versus zero. Okay, and finally, we're looking at the uh thirteen hundred.
So we've done thirteen.
You have this, right?
I do, yeah. Okay, we did one thousand, all right, great, we're done. Okay, so um I think we saw a a couple contin- or contingencies, basically only that the project is approved by the Department of Environmental Protection, and what's the other permit?
Army Corps of Engineers, yeah, which we have, and that they've already approved.
Oh, you got that, okay, so contingency.
I just have one question, just a clarification thing. You mentioned that at the edge of the new parking area, the the furthest out edge.
Yes.
There was a vernal pool or something?
There's a significant vernal pool uh right here in this location, uh in behind the, in behind the hip building.
Okay.
Yep, so when you, when you have a a vernal pool, so the first, the kind of the process, just to quickly explain it, you have a vernal pool, it's a depression of water, um and what happens is, is in the right time of year, you have to have it analyzed, and they have to count egg masses. Um the purpose of that is to determine if it's a significant vernal pool or not. So this one, uh we properly did that, um we actually had a subconsult to do it, but they uh they counted the egg masses, they determined it was a significant vernal pool. So once that's been identified, you now have a habitat around that that they protect. So it's a two hundred and fifty-foot habitat, that's how DEP standard is, Army Corps changes theirs to whatever basically they want. So they kinda increase it or reduce it, uh so we kinda hold the two hundred and fifty-foot habitat, and DEP will issue a permit to impact up to twenty-five percent of that critical habitat area, as long as you do not impact the pool itself. Uh so that's what we've done, we've shown a little area within that, all of this was pre-existing and grandfathered. We've shown a little bit of area of impact within that, but we're not proposing to impact the pool itself, uh meeting the standard and meeting the requirement. In fact, all of this area down here is all temporary for grading, uh once we finish the grading and whatnot, we're gonna allow it to naturalize right up to the edge anyways, just enough so we can push some snow off the end, and then we're gonna leave that area to naturalize uh in its current condition.
So that twenty-five percent is the area that exists around?
Yeah, exactly, that's that area inside that two hundred and fifty-foot, that buffer, so when, and that's the entire buffer, so when you take a circle, So when you take a circle, two hundred and fifty feet around, this is only, you know, a, a fraction of it, this is forty percent of it. And it goes all the way around the buffer is how that, that works, and you can impact that area and provide those calculations to DEP and Army Corps.
And disturbance is considered to be the building, um, that exists today?
Yep.
Plus the new paved area?
Correct.
What other, what other features?
Anything you disturb, so it's literally, if you go in and remove trees, that's disturbance.
Yep.
Uh, so they've, they've kinda calculated that and reviewed that.
Yep.
So you said the building that was originally there was grandfathered in, so is that part of the twenty-five percent calculation?
No, so it, they, so the way we presented it to them and the way they've reviewed, it doesn't have to get included in that twenty-five percent. But on, it's convoluted here, so the issue is, is we're actually under that when you do the numbers, but it doesn't have to be included in those numbers. So we are under twenty-five percent total cumulatively, including all the grandfathered items. We actually, I had that conversation with them, so we actually got to that point, we were still under that twenty-five percent, ignoring the grandfathered pieces and components.
Right, I was gonna say, I mean, like, I, I understand that there's grandfathered pieces and across, but if we were looking at it and like, well, alright, thirty percent of it has already been covered.
Right, 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 right.
But we don't have to count it this time, so we're just gonna a little bit more.
You can kinda see that, that, that little triangle there.
That's what I was gonna say, it looked like it, but you couldn't tell based off of what was.
We're right, we're right at that threshold, yep, we're right there.
And that's perfect, thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely.
That vernal pool wasn't identified when this was originally.
Correct.
Correct.
They weren't, they weren't looking for them then.
They weren't looking for them, so it's a.
And it, a lot of the water comes from the, the back road, where the subdivisions are. So that water flows towards MRC.
Yep. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the application with the con- uh, condition of the DEP permit?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor approving? Five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I would like to add a little bit more, so here's.
Especially since you've approved it.
Yeah, so it's, it's been approved now, so, so.
Sell after the close, right?
No, 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 so we have the Army Corps permit in place, DEP is within days of issuing the permit. They have given us permission to proceed with tree removal prior to obtaining that permit.
Is that ready?
So the, the reasoning is, is there's a bat habitat that has been identified, that mates, the mating season starts April fifteenth. And if, if we don't remove trees before April fifteenth, we can't remove trees until October first. So to get this project started, DEP has authorized us to remove the trees, 'cause we're so close to having the permit, they just have to refine it and revise it. Uh, and we have the Army Corps permit, which they expedited for this very reason, so that we can remove the trees in advance. So if we see what's going on there, just be aware that we'll, we'll communicate with Orion.
I don't think you need plan or approval to remove trees, so.
You're gonna, we're good, okay, I just, I just wanted, 'cause it's conditioned, so we don't technically have site plan review until we produce the permit, we're not gonna produce the permit for a week, you know, so.
But you will be working on stuff.
But we're gonna be out there removing trees, and I don't want everybody to panic and say, just to be clear.
You have a copy of that approval to.
Absolutely, we'll share, we'll share that correspondence, he'll have everything we have, and we'll make it clear before.
Again, that's an enforcement issue.
Yes, sounds good to me.
And the bat, the bat, uh, approval is the whole state of Maine?
Yep.
Is been identified as.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's coming, it's here.
Alright.
Thank you all very much for your time, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Moving on, other business, so these are, uh.
Before you do that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'll bring it to you tomorrow, I gotta mark some stuff up, if at all, I'll bring it over there, so before y'all leave, just sign this, yeah.
Chain of orders.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay, so there's a few other items, uh, so, I'm just gonna list them, so there was. A letter to the select board to focus on issues, and there was an impact fee ordinance in the works.
Yeah.
There was an, uh, amendment, or sorry, revision to our chapter nine hundred ordinance for discussion, and, um.
Alright, so, and, and some of the questions that, uh, some of y'all had, I think, I think maybe the other business should have been changed to discussion, so, these are more discussion items. I don't have anything to present, I'm not, I'm not at that level yet, but to start with the letter of the select board, at one of the meetings, I think it was the last meeting, was kind of talked about the new developments coming in to that, uh, that stretch of Route one in between Pascal Avenue and West Street. And what kinda impact that, that's gonna have on that area, and how can y'all voice that to the select board? Obviously, we have a select board liaison, but I was talking to our attorney, what is the appropriate method, other than the liaison, if y'all can formulate a letter saying, hey, we got developments that are listed that are coming in this area, we see foresee issues that could be coming up, should be an item that we start focusing on. And that is it, and that can be the same for other items, other projects and the such. But that's just another way, other than John, who will do a very good job of taking these concerns to the select board, but instead of just John saying it, John can say, I've got a letter from the planning board saying, here are these applications that are coming, we're gonna have increased traffic concerns, we've got other issues that are coming along, so, that's all that's about.
So, sorry, what was, what was brought up at the select board meeting, regard to the, the application?
It was, it was at a planning board meeting, that, it was brought up of concerns from.
Concerns about traffic?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was not discussed at the select board meeting, yet?
No, uh, there was just, uh, items of how do we, how do we start focusing on this?
Okay.
Like, planning board, what, what can y'all do? This is something y'all can do.
Yeah.
Then your voice is being heard, John is saying it as well, but now he also has like a letter codified by the planning board that we're seeing issues, there's gonna be more issues coming, pay attention. And then that can also go to, and I, I don't know if the police chief or fire chief or public works director would get on board with that letter or not, but they would see it as well, and they would see the projects as well as it comes through. And so it's, it would be on everybody's radar, but it's just a way to.
Approach the mic, please.
Are we, are we still in a meeting?
Yes, it's still, still a meeting.
State your name.
So, in that area, um, I think one thing that has been coming up a lot.
You got me, Jeff? Okay, in that, in that area of discussion, I hope you guys will, uh, raise the issue of, uh, how you're going to, going to be more diligent on behalf of the town with the, any major subdivision, and particularly the roads. Because we've had a problem in the past with subdivisions getting approved, and the specifications were, uh, not up to standard, to put it mildly.
You're talking about the internal roads within the subdivision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then they become town roads, you know, eventually.
They can.
Typically, that's what's been happening, if, uh, what's this development up on, uh, Old County Road, you know, east?
Old County Road.
Bay Ridge?
What's that, Bay Ridge?
Oh, Bay Ridge, yes.
We've just been, had to go through that top to bottom, replace all the culverts, and, you know, and every covert is what, like eighty thousand bucks or something?
Oh, that depends on the culprit, but, yeah, they're, they're not cheap.
Yeah, I mean, and they just boom, 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 and suddenly we've got half a million dollars added to the public works budget. So it, we're really finding that what's happening is some of these developments were approved long ago, and they've just broken down to the point where we've had to go in and do major, uh, repair work and rebuild, basically rebuild the roads. So I would just give you guys the kinda encouragement to really, anybody who comes through a major subdivision and they're talking about a road, recognize that it's high probability it's gonna become a town road. And then it's, uh, for us to have to deal with whatever they did in constructing it.
So, I might, done that piece, but don't we put these plans past public works for their input on terms of whether or not the roads are gonna be something they want during the past, or just that they?
To, to accept a road, I mean, if, if, and I could be incorrect on this, but there, there's an ordinance on the municipal road acceptance, and it has to go through this whole deal. And then budget committee's involved, they make a recommendation, then it goes to the voters to accept it. One of the big cruxes, it's gotta be, I think it's like fifty or fifty-one percent or majority developed. So that, it can't just be a vacant lot or vacant subdivision, it's just gonna split. So at least fifty percent has to be developed, and then it's gonna meet our standards. So the, the catch is, and I think it's in there, it's, it's the performance guaranteeer holding them accountable to redo it. So that's where performance guarantee's gonna come into play on it. But there's some ideas I've been kicking around with our attorney on changing the ordinance, um, to incentivize people to do it this way, so that we accept it as it's built, something of that nature.
What is it that makes it inevitable that the town will?
It's required by the state, as far as I know.
When it reaches that threshold of the development?
Uh, no, so if it's a private development, they have to go through the formal request by the municipality to accept it, it doesn't just one day become the town's.
Like you said, it goes to vote, right?
I, I don't, it seems to me I've heard in the past that, um, they, that it's never turned down, that all towns always accept these roads, they basically have to.
Likely, I don't know.
Well, it goes to vote, so.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Right, 'cause we just accepted Robinson Drive, right?
Well, maybe it should.
What I missed here is where, where are the standards that have to be met?
It's in the municipal, municipal, uh, municipal road acceptance ordinance.
We, we have one of those, a municipal road acceptance ordinance?
Yeah.
I'm gonna write that down.
We, we have, when, uh, certain private roads go to this town for voting in as public roads, we have turned them down. And it depends both on the mood of the consistency and on the, um, condition of the road. And there's some, there's some developments or some areas that do not want paved roads.
Yeah, there's some, so.
It's interesting, because I, I think I was spoiled, because we had a licensed engineer that worked with our planning board. And it was on the subdivision contractors dime. And that person, that licensed engineer, did the due diligence to make sure they met the standards, because it, it, the assumption was that eventually they would go to the town for a vote and be accepted, and then the town would have to maintain the road, so.
Technically, you do, it's just, we're not, we're not paying one to be here, what, what it is, is like you request it, and then the planning board has that authority to say, okay, we wanted a professional's opinion, engineer's opinion about the road. And then that goes out, and the help can ask to pay for it.
Does our public works not have a qualified engineer for?
We do not employ a certified engineer.
And, you know, you gotta remember, this is twenty years ago, so the, the lot has changed in twenty years, and standards have improved, and we're more aware of it. So some of these developments are pretty old, and, uh.
For sure, but you're talking about making sure going forward.
Yeah, I mean, now let's, let's really be diligent about that.
That's our piece, is that, is, does the public works have a standard that's in place that says this is what it takes them across, and are they relying on us to check that when, when we send this to them and have them sign off on it?
They, they look at our ordinance to make sure it meets the standard of.
Could we write it into our, just write it into our ordinance, that any roads in a subdivision have to meet the standard of the municipal road, whatever, whatever?
Yeah, so, I mean, we're, we're gonna look at some tweaks and changes, uh, to various items, but.
When you say we, who are you referring to?
We.
Us.
We.
The royal we.
And then.
I wondered whether you were talking like.
Uh, the select board. Yeah, the royal we.
The board of selectmen, they're in a tough position, because you have taxpayers, you know, there, and they're expecting services to the street, and second generations are coming in, and why isn't my road plowed? I mean, you know, we had roads that the town didn't accept, which was unfair to the poor people that were there, but the town felt that they didn't, it wasn't up to standard, you know?
Yeah, and, and good on them, because it, they are really expensive, that's what I can tell you, you know.
Wasn't it Cicero who said caveat eptor?
Alright.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's it about the letter to the select board, I don't know if y'all wanna talk a little bit more about that or not?
I mean, I think that's it, that's it.
Well, you.
Orion, you brought it, uh, I guess we all talked about it specifically with the most recent proposed subdivision, and then some people, after that meeting, were talking about the park that's gonna be, you know, not that far from that subdivision, and one of the members was saying, they're not gonna be able to get out at that light, so, I mean, i- it is a concern.
Yeah.
True, but again, as we went through that piece, the projected amount of traffic that comes in and out of there is less than three percent.
No, no, I'm not saying, Orion's saying that he would perhaps like a letter from us saying that we're concerned, not necessarily, we, I, I'm assuming that's what you're saying, no?
No, no, I'm, I'm not saying I want y'all to do it, that's not it, I'm saying this is an avenue for you, if you want to provide.
Address that concern?
As the planning board, we see issues here, select board, we suggest y'all take a look at it in some manner.
I would like to. I think we should.
I'm saying it's a tool.
Yeah.
Yes. That John can deliver, in addition to his version of it.
I'd like to have, um, um, I think it was presented to the select board prior to your tenure on it, about the traffic study that was done within the village and some of the, some of our materials of the condition of turning on and off Route one and Pascal and West Street even. I would have appreciated if the, the planning board had had that review of, or had been presented that information by the engineers as well.
Are we talking about that VPO?
Traffic, yeah, the traffic infrastructure study.
Yeah, because I don't know where that went, if that's just sort of.
It's on the website.
A study, yeah, but a study that was done, and is the town reacting to it in any way, or?
Um, yeah, uh, well, what do you mean by the town, I mean, the select board?
Yeah, select board is, you know, your office, the royal you, uh, concerned with the results of that study?
Yeah, and we're currently in the process with main DOT to get federal funding to implement the majority of those changes.
Okay.
So, we'll see what happens.
Where on your priority list is it, actually?
In, at the top.
You're lying to be like.
No, I'm not lying, I can't say it's number one, uh, number one's a very delicate matter. Number two, maybe number three, um, but definitely in the top five.
We don't need to be involved in that one, yeah.
No.
Well, that.
Well, as, you know, as a resident who, who's, who's, um, life depends on Pascal Avenue and the left turn that I have to make, and joining traffic and so forth, I'm, I am quite concerned with, with the traffic that runs through the town of Rockford, which includes all kinds of sundry vehicles. Belong or don't belong.
Well, I think we're talking about a couple things there. So we're talking about redoing the bridge.
Well, but, well, but there was also the whole idea of calming Pascal Avenue with narrower lanes, I mean, there were some interesting proposals that came up.
High, it's high, there's great interest in pursuing that.
Go ahead.
You know, the grant that Orion's referring to would be like, what, a ten million grant with, a nine million grant for a ten million project, he's, I'm rounding here. And the town would have to match the grant with that one million dollars, which means a bond. So we're not there yet, and, uh, given the current budget, I would say, you know, it might be asking a little bit much right now, so.
I have the solution to your traffic calming, by the way, on Pascal, which is to put a traffic light in the intersection of Union and Elm Street in Camden.
And also the, the bridge. The bridge, Jan, is the.
The bridge, oh, no, no, the bridge.
It's M dot, and that's gonna have two, each side's gonna have sidewalks on it.
I understand, but, but, uh, but, um.
That's going ahead.
A nicer bridge only increases the load of traffic that comes down the street.
Put the stop sign on your.
There, there, so, the, the traffic infrastructure study and the bridge, they, they coexist.
I know.
So main DOT is putting, I don't know what you wanna call it, but I'll categorize it as traffic calming, the same methodology into that bridge as they are into the rest of it.
Okay.
So, you're not gonna have someone going slow and then speeding up real quick on the bridge.
No, no, I'm worried about, I'm not, meaning, I'm not speeding so much, I'm worried about, about the kind of traffic that comes through, the numbers of trucks that come through.
Sure.
The number of vehicles who understand that they could avoid that stop sign, which should be replaced, but nobody ever will, until enough people have not been killed there to cause DOT to justify a red light.
You know, it's interesting, uh, you know, I think that's a legitimate concern, Jan, but one thing, just anecdotally, my observation, 'cause I live right in the neighborhood here too, is that the, the, um, it, it seems like there's now kind of a natural choking that's going on in the village, right, as you come off the bridge. And it slows everybody down, which to me, if I'm trying to make time, that's not the way I'm gonna go, once I get caught in, in that bottleneck.
Maybe people will understand that.
So I think they're gonna, I think it's gonna.
Well, that could be.
It's going to dissipate quite a bit.
Except for the people who then.
The more activity there is in the village, the more it's gonna be. What's that?
Except for the people who, instead of going around central, where, where it's crowded, come up, come up my street.
Yeah, we'll send them over to your place.
Well, they already come, thank you, they have found us, no problem.
No, seriously, I think, you know, they're, they're gonna figure out, this is just crazy. No, seriously, I think, you know, they're, they're gonna figure out, this is just crazy, I'll just stay on Route One and.
No, as long as, as long as you guys are paying attention.
So, this, this ties really well into the next item that, that I'm, I'm working on is the impact fee ordinance. So, we, we don't have an impact fee, so if a developer.
Describe what that is.
Yeah, so, the developer comes in and they're gonna have some substantial impact on one of our uses. And right now, that's uncategorized right now, but we can say police services or fire services or wastewater or sidewalks, anything. We can, through a properly calibrated formula, come up with an adequate fee for the developer that then goes into a fund for that particular purpose to then increase sewage capacity, increase police services, fire services, what have you. So, those are items that we currently don't, that's a tool that we don't have at our disposal that we definitely need, so. Our attorney was kinda shocked we didn't have something, not in like a, oh my sense away, but just concerned. So, there's some work being done on that.
So, that need to go to vote in order to be implemented?
Yeah, that'll go into the land use ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, important.
When are we likely to see that?
Uh, well, it'd be prepped for the November.
November.
Yeah. Which, which, yeah, it said it'd be prepped for the November. My goal is for the November. That all goes. Which brings up a topic you brought up, some comments you were making for the June ballot, so that, that timeline is passed for June, so. Yeah.
It seems crazy.
It does seem crazy, it's a.
I mean, I'm pretty sure we've had the pieces in, I mean, we can go to November too, I'm with you, but I'm, I'm fairly certain our March meeting was always the last one because it had to go to April.
It's, it's the weird ninety day fall day thing.
So, does it have to do with this was not published in this month's planning board meeting agenda?
No, it actually has to do with what happens at the select board level. So, the select board, at their ninety day mark, I think, was it March, April? At their March meeting, they order questions, generic questions about what or how many, kind of the category of where it's going for the June ballot and then the April is when they finalize it. So, April meeting is when they're finalizing the questions that are gonna go on the ballot. And I don't know the next step in terms of the ballot, but that's the timetable.
That's fine.
It sneaks up on me every single time.
So, the beginning of March, the beginning of March, select board meeting is when they actually review the preliminary warrant articles?
Yes.
Noted.
Yes, and if there's like a weird month and how the days fall, sometimes you gotta do it in February. At our meeting, because we're at the end and they're at the beginning. So, technically, we should be doing our recommendations in February from there.
Exactly.
Part, part of the issue too is just basic logistics of getting the warrant printed and, you know, and then you got absentee voting, so that starts thirty days before, you know, so you gotta have all that stuff ready. And if you really wanna hear all the nitty gritty, ask Liz sometime. She did, how many elections last year? Five?
I forget, yeah, she did a bunch.
Yeah, it was way too many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But let's just focus on June.
Uh, that being said, would you like to discuss it?
Yeah.
Okay, so Sam had a, a thought for an amendment to our ordinance, chapter nine hundred. And it's kind of, I would say, a cleanup. I don't know how we didn't.
Yeah.
Well, I have a question. I have some question about that because if you look at those zones on the map, I know they say growth area, but nine oh four, if you look at the zoning map.
Do you wanna like talk about what it is that Sam is proposing first? So, Sam is proposing.
He's proposing to make the, he's proposing to make the lot sizes consistent across those zones.
Yeah. Is that fair accurate description of what you're trying to do, Sam?
That's correct.
Okay, so, we're looking at growth areas in the dimensional tables. If you look at table A, nine oh four, nine oh two, nine oh four, nine oh six are all designated growth areas. And it says minimum lot size without sewer, twenty thousand square feet across those three zones. And then minimum lot size with public sewer is three thousand for nine oh two, four thousand for nine oh four and six. Okay, then you go down to general dimensional requirements and it says, single family dwelling without sewer. And we see twenty thousand feet, forty thousand in nine oh four, and twenty thousand in nine oh six. And then it says with public sewer, you, you're down to three thousand square feet in nine oh two, four thousand in nine oh four and four thousand in nine oh six. So, they're the, they're the same. But then when you get to multifamily, it says twenty thousand without sewer, without public sewer, twenty thousand square feet per unit for nine oh four and nine oh six.
Yeah, that, which by the way is the state minimum requirement, twenty thousand square feet per unit without public sewer.
But with public sewer, nine oh six goes down to three thousand square feet.
So does nine oh two.
And nine oh two, but not nine oh four.
That's correct.
Now, if you look at, if you look at the zoning map, nine oh four is just a small area around West Rockport and the downtown village area.
Nine oh four?
Uh, excuse me.
Intersection of West and Commercial.
Excuse me, nine oh six.
Yeah, I was like, nine oh four is the majority of the town.
I got it reversed. So, nine oh six is the village area around West Rockport, you know, the intersection of ninety and seventeen.
Yep.
And then, if you look at nine oh four, that is called, it's not called mixed residential and business, it's called residential. And it's all these big areas.
Yes.
Yes.
Set back behind the.
So, what was the, my, just, my question is, what was the rationale? I don't think this was a mistake. I think it was done intentionally and why is that?
We have to review the meeting on it and I know it was done intentionally because I, my proposal was a smaller lot in nine oh four and the planning board and in nine oh eight with sewer. And I don't, I don't remember what it is. I'd have to look at that meeting, but there was conversation about putting it the way it is.
Well, right, right now in nine oh four, you can make a two thou, twenty thousand square foot minimum lot. But you can't build on it.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you on what you're pointing out.
Right, so I mean, like, I mean, regardless, this is gonna cause problems as is.
Well, you can build on it if it has sewer.
Yeah, if you have.
Sorry, yes. There's not a lot of those that are actually covered by that, but yeah, I'm with you.
No, I, and I'm with you. I don't see why you would have a minimum lot size that's smaller than the single family dwelling without public sewer. Unless, that's less than twenty thousand, I mean.
Right, and again, like the single family dwelling without public sewer, that, that minimum size is set by the state.
Exactly, we can't go below that.
Right.
I also think that the, um, single family dwelling with sewer is the, the minimum, like you wouldn't have a, on a septic that's less than that. But at the same time, if the single family dwelling with public sewer, so for example, nine oh four in table B, nine oh four has a forty thousand square foot requirement for, uh, this is what I'm talking about, public sewer, but four thousand for with public sewer. So, why isn't it the twenty thousand that's the lot size requirement? Like, it's just, they should fall back to whatever the minimum requirement in all cases to without public sewer. Nine oh seven is the same way.
I'm sorry, which part are you, the minimum lot size?
For, okay, this may be easier to understand. Nine oh seven, minimum lot size is twenty thousand on septic
Yep.
by state rule, ten thousand on public sewer.
Yep.
But it's, in the table B, it's forty thousand for a single family dwelling. Why not twenty thousand?
Yeah.
That's without public sewer.
I understand, that's the minimum set by the state, but if it had public sewer, it'd be ten thousand per unit. So, like, why can't we just fall back to the state minimum rather than creating our own?
Yeah.
Unless we want bigger lots, like nine oh eight.
Well, and nine, and nine oh three, I mean, coastal residential, I, I do get.
Right.
Wanting, having some larger lots in places, but when we have oh four, nine oh four listed as a growth zone, which is where we wanna have the developments put in and that's part of like around where we have cluster development bonuses and stuff, if you're in the growth zone. Like, nine oh four should, should be able to be developed the same way those other two are because of that. And right now, like when, when we put the, you know, ill-fated map of lots from the first sketch drawing review, you know, they, they put twenty-five lots in there because they went through and they all fit based off of there, but those same lot sizes wouldn't work in nine oh four because of a considerable number of them were below forty thousand for a single unit home. So, like that, that is the reason that triggered this, by the way, is when I went back through and I was checking, I was like, what? You couldn't do this same thing if it was nine oh four versus nine oh six. And if they're all like, you can do it in nine oh two, you could do it in nine oh six, but you can't do it in nine oh four and they're all listed as, you know, targeted growth zones for the town, so like, and nine oh four being the largest one out of that group has the most potential for.
That is true.
Getting those places in the place. I, I, now I know it is not necessarily the most popular idea in the world to make things smaller because you'll be able to get more people into areas that currently exist, right?
With the cost of land right now, I mean, you kinda have to make them smaller to make it financially work.
Well, and I think.
I think they're, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that, no, no, that's a piece, and I think that's, you know, looking at this, this table and understanding, you know, that we made the adjustments we did to get in around LD two thousand and three and then seeing this part of it just seemed inconsistent enough that we want, it seemed like it was worth addressing and getting, I know it takes going all the way to vote in order to make it happen. But it seemed worthwhile considering it was going to restrict kind of the, the largest area we have designated for growth. And that's, that, that was the reason for proposing it.
I mean, to Tom's question, what, and to Orion's saying, like, the, the reasoning, the rationale behind these numbers was something, do we?
I, I, I don't remember, I'd have to relook. I know we were pro, proposing smaller lots initially because of LD two thousand and three requirements and we focused on the growth zone area and the lots, sizes that I proposed were brought up to size, but I, I couldn't tell you immediately why nine oh four, nine oh seven, single family without sewer, doesn't match the minimum lot size without sewer. I, I don't have that.
Well, I mean, and, and it makes sense on nine oh seven with it being mixed commercial and, and you're like, and there being most of them right on major roads. Like, I can understand some of those pieces and like, I mean, when we went through this, you know, I, I was arguing for smaller lot sizes in nine oh eight, but that's against, you know, the, the previous comprehensive plan that we had, the maintaining whorlness and then like, and I get that piece. So, like, you know, minimum lot size in the rural area is not twenty thousand square feet, right, like we, we get that. I just, this part for me, looking at this and going through and looking at, you know, I don't have a good answer for a developer that says, how come I can't put this same type of development into one of the growth areas even though like you've got two smaller ones and one big one and I can't get into the big one?
Well, I think, I think what it is a lot is that the areas that allow the smaller, very small lot sizes tend to be almost like urban. And people like that, you know, they, they don't mind being cheek to jowl, but you can see the reluctance of people to see increased density when you've got a.
Which, which is why it had to go to state law in order to be able to get past that feeling.
Like you said, it's not gonna be the most popular position.
And, and I get that piece, but again, like it's, I, if you have them set up as growth zones and you've got everything set there and then you can, you, and then there's inconsistencies between them, I, like, I think that puts the town more at risk in terms of people trying to like fight that and go through it than, than the hassle of making an adjustment to it so that everything lines up with what we said we wanted. Instead of saying, kind of saying it and then kind of not doing it fully.
Orion, do you think there's anything in the new comprehensive plan?
I was just about to talk about it.
That's, that deals with, with, that changes our emphasis on growth zones, where they are or what they are? Maybe it's too early to be talking about this until the, the vote is passed, that?
Well, what I, what I can say, and John, this is news for you too, today I got notification from the state that we passed all our requirements. They have some suggested additives to strengthen it, so we're gonna contemplate that with the committee, but we don't have to go through a full review with the state again, so that'll be good. In terms of your question on the growth zone and the future land use map, no, it's not gonna change, it's actually gonna clean up kind of what that growth zone map is because before it identified zones and it kind of grew and changed because zones changed. This one's not an official map and it identifies kind of its interests, so it'll be a little more clear in terms of like what to do.
Is there a beta of this that, that I can read?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the town website.
Oh, it's on the website, okay.
Also went through it as a, as a planning board there for a little bit to go over the areas we had concerns with.
It hasn't substantially changed. Did they meet again and remove the short-term rental?
Just the, um, collecting the data.
Okay.
Yeah, item. That's it.
And that's the only change they made?
Yep, that's the only change they made.
Yeah, okay. I, I, one further thing that I was clumsily trying to get to is that why do we establish a separate minimum lot size or, you know, lot area for dwelling units for those which have public sewer versus those which do not have public sewer, where the septic field ones exceeds both numbers, both the minimum for the, with sewer and the state minimum? Like, why do we put a forty thousand in there when our minimum lot size is twenty thousand and the state says twenty thousand? Why do we have a, like, well, double it if you have a septic field, like why? I just don't know why we do that.
I think that was, I, I'd have to look to see what it was before. I think nine oh three we didn't change. I think nine oh four was forty thousand.
But it's almost like we're saying, we know better than the state what is required for a septic field at that point because we're saying you can put a, a house in there that's on, on town sewer.
I don't, I don't think it's a, we, we think there needs to be more space. I think it's a, town doesn't want that small of a lot.
But they've already said that we, we're okay with it with, if you're on sewer.
Right.
Like, why is there in nine oh three twenty thousand minimum lot size, but forty thousand if it's on sewer when twenty thousand's the state minimum?
I don't disagree with you. I agree. But changing the lot size, you know, with the zoning, how are you, how are you gonna make it flow? How, how's it gonna look? What is, what is existing there? What should the lot size be? I'm not opposed to twenty thousand. I'm not opposed to meeting the minimum lot size by the state.
I missed that part, but no, I'm, I'm with you on, well, you're talking about nine oh three, right, like?
Why are we establishing sort of arbitrary number when the minimum lot size is less and the state says, no, it can be less?
It's a conversation.
Yeah.
Well, if I could have a, make a suggestion.
Do you wanna speak into a mic so Jeff doesn't get angry? I don't know.
He just got comfortable back there.
Maybe Jeff, you just give Joe a call because he oversaw, you know, a lot of this. Yeah, and he, he really lived and breathed all this. And another good person to reach out to is Richard Remson, who had a lot of, puts a lot of time into, had put a lot of time into this years ago and, you know, believe me, he's a, he's walking history book as far as ordinances go.
Institutional history.
So, I think you get some good answers there.
Yeah.
Not necessarily agreeing with him, but you at least answer some of the questions you have and what their thinking was.
Yeah, I think I'll do that.
Can we have them come to the next meeting and do that?
Do we have subpoena power?
Subpoena power?
Well, I mean, just to add, I mean, like if, if this isn't, if we don't have to get our question together until, well, hang on.
Well, you have time.
As well.
It's probably next month.
No, it's by July, right?
What, what are we talking about?
How far ahead do we have to get?
Ahead of November. What's the meeting? Ahead of November, what's the meeting for that? And there's no meeting in July, right, like, so there's, it's like, Wardburg. Is it June? Because there's an election. When do they not have a real one?
We, we, so, so, okay, we, so to order the question component, okay, so, so that has to be done. We don't have to be done with what we're doing quite yet, so that should help with some of this. Once they finalize the question, they would kinda need to not mess with it anymore.
Yeah, the language doesn't get finalized until this next meeting, which is in April.
No, I, I understand that, so what meeting do I have to have the question in by for November?
Well, August, September, October, yeah, our August meeting, we need to finalize.
So we have to have our me, like, yeah, July, had it right?
July, July.
We, we've gotta get
It's August for
You've gotta get to the August select board meeting, which is the beginning of August.
August, September, October, and May.
So our meeting's at the end of the month of July?
90 month, 90 days before is when they order a question, 60 days before, which is the next meeting here, that is when they finalize the question. So 90 days before for November would be August, September, October, August meeting.
So we need to have ours by July, at the end of July?
We need to know what we're doing by July and have a pretty good draft. August, we need to finalize at a minimum. I prefer us finalizing in July.
July, it's a July.
But I mean, this right here, what you're currently proposing to do, that's simple to do, the, the impact, what did I just call it? I'm losing my mind. Impact fee ordinance, that one's gonna take a little bit of work, but from looking at others, it's really just coming up with it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I don't think this is a particularly difficult question to gonna get and put through and across. I just wanna say, like, we missed the first one to get onto this one. Like, oh, yeah, we can, we can bring people in and talk about it and figure out why we got here and, and get a little bit more understanding around it. I just didn't wanna take too much time and miss the next one.
Yeah. So with that, I would encourage the planning board to look at the comp plan, in particular, the future growth zone area, the future, future land use section, it's not that long. In particular, for the zoning map, I don't know if we will propose, or if we should propose by November, but if there's any cleanup items, which I know we have, I think we've done a pretty good job kinda cleaning the zoning map up. There's a couple of stragglers, so I might put something together as a proposal.
Oh, in terms of making modifications to the map?
Yep. Yep. There's like some lots that are split in half on zone that don't make any sense, so.
So I propose that we table the, any kind of motion on this ordinance change to, after we've collected more data.
Then we had satisfaction. No, I, I, I agree with that, I think that's perfectly fine and acceptable and reasonable, given what we have now learned. Is, uh, everything on other business?
Um, one other thing, which is next month's meeting, which is scheduled for, uh, April 24. It's school vacation week.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will not be here.
Okay. What do you wanna do?
Can adjust, or you can have it without me, or?
Bump it a week. I'd be in preference of bumping it a week, but then you'd have two meetings in May. But you can also bump it up if you want.
Um, I don't mind the two meetings in May.
I think, I, yeah, actually with, with, uh, I, I don't know if Habitat for Humanity was gonna be at April's meeting or not, but I need to let them know. If they're banking on the 24th, they wouldn't be able to probably make the 17th, so.
Again, I don't mean to drive the whole ship here.
No, I mean, I, I'd have trouble making that meeting too, um, the 24th.
No, I'm saying bump it back.
No, no, I know.
Ryan, that Habitat meeting, are we doing a walkthrough before that meeting as well?
We'd have to.
Yeah, I mean, I think the first works.
May 1st?
Does that, that work on you guys' calendars?
So you're gonna have May 1st and May 22nd?
Yeah, it would be
Is that the plan?
Yes, 1st and 22nd.
Okay.
I mean, we can also move the 22nd to 29 if we feel the week should, we don't have to do that now. But I would, I would
Oh, I see what you mean.
You can't do, you can't do it the 29th, there's another meeting going on, and I'm not, I'm not here on the 29th.
Okay, that's fine.
So what's the decision?
May 1st, I think.
Can you check your calendar about May 1st as being the April meeting?
May 1st, I don't have anything listed.
Okay, what about you, Peter? Okay.
I have a note to clean my dishwasher.
So this is the April planning
It'll be the April meeting on May 1st. May 1st.
All right, I'll get all that scheduled, and I'll send a calendar invite. I didn't do that for this meeting, I apologize.
Yeah, after I got reprimanded for not getting to it early enough, and then all of a sudden I was there and I checked my email early, and it wasn't even there. I felt so bad.
Sorry.
Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded by Jan, all those in favor? 5:00
Thank you very much.
At 8:07. Thanks for coming.